Hey Kamal, can we let Sam in?
I'm in, I'm in.
He's good.
Morning. He just let me in. As soon as I text you, he let me in.
Oh, morning. Good.
I know you leave meetings off sometimes in the breaks. So if you can, when you come back, just click on the raise your hand button and we'll be able to-
That's what I did this time. Alright, got it.
There's so many people and they're hard to see.
Sure, sure. Alright, as long as, just raise, I'll raise my hand. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone. I'm just gonna give, I'm gonna give a few more minutes as we settle some things. Alright, looks like we have everyone here. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the December 18th, 2020, virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Timmy Knutson. My pronouns are he/him/his. And I am the chairman of the ZBA. First off, Commissioner Stahl, Sanchez, Esposito, Toya, and I wish everyone a very happy and healthy holiday season. One second. It sounds like there's some feedback. If you're not speaking, will you mute? Great, I think we're okay. So again, happy holidays. It's a unique holiday season this year, no doubt, as many of us celebrate with people we love over video rather than in person. But I hope that everyone on this Zoom call masks up and finds some rest, joy, and comfort as we move into a whole new year. Today is also my mom's birthday, so happy birthday to Terry Knutson, and I can't imagine a better way to spend it than watching the whole meeting of the zoning board of appeals. So I hope you do, and every single, single minute of it, no matter how late it goes. Without, without further ado, I'd like to take judicial notice of the fact that on December 11th, 2020, the governor of the state of Illinois signed a disaster proclamation declaring all counties of the state of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. The disaster proclamation is in effect until January 11th, 2011, 2021. Thus, Section 7E1 of the Open Meetings Act has been met. Sorry, I skipped around there. Second, I am making a determination pursuant to Section 72 of the Open Meetings Act that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. Similarly, I am also making a determination pursuant to Section 75 that because of the disaster declared by the governor, it is unfeasible for at least one member of the zoning board of appeals or its chief administrative officer, or its chief legal officer, to be physically present at the meeting place inasmuch as there is no more meeting place. Third, this meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation promulgated by my predecessor, which are posted to the board's website. I encourage everyone who frequently appears before the board to familiarize yourselves with these emergency rules. And we do not know how long the COVID-19 public health emergency will last. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via live streaming. It is also being recorded. We've established these virtual hearings in keeping with the governor, the general assembly, mayor Lightfoot, and city council's goal to continue government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during the hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during the hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the meeting. And in addition, everyone wishing to testify at today's hearing, whether on behalf of an applicant or an opposition, was required to register before today's meeting. For those who do not regularly appear before the board, I will go over a few things for those who are participating in the meeting. We are operating under the emergency rules. So for all applicants, objectors, and their attorneys, if you do not send us your exhibits by the cutoff date and time, you will not be able to reference them. Number two, all participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, we will transfer, transfer you to become a panelist. There will be a short switchover where you will lose the feed, so don't be surprised by that. Number three, once you are set as a panelist, please present your case. Or staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen. Number four, please be mindful of background music and please mute yourself when you are not speaking. Number five, in addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our record, so it is important that two people do not speak at the same time. You might see me muting if that happens. Number six, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the livestream. This will cause audio interference. Let me repeat that. If you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the livestream in tandem. Number seven, please make sure you identify yourself whenever you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court reporters cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this. Number eight, if an applicant or anyone in opposition to the application has any technical issues in presenting their case and is unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue this matter until the end of the call in order to create time to resolve the issues. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent hearing. Number nine, after your matter or matters are concluded, please leave the Zoom meeting. If you are interested in continuing to watch our meeting, which I hope you are, I encourage you to watch using our livestream, which is accessible via the website. Now, I'd like to cause a virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. I will take a roll call to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present, please verify that you can hear and see me. Commissioner Stahl.
President, I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
President, I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner Esposito.
President, and I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner Toya.
I'm present, and I can hear and see you as well.
Great, and I am present as well, and I think we can all hear and see me. The minutes of the September 18th, 2020 meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Stahl?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito? Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Great, those minutes are approved. I also, I also move that we approve the minutes of the November meeting, which have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve these minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Stahl?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
The November 2020 meeting minutes are approved. I now move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Stahl?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
The agenda has been approved. Now I'm gonna take any continuances and withdrawals, and I understand that we have several. Let's see, is anyone here for matter 442-20-S? Hey Kamal, it looks like Nick Fatikas has his hand up. I know that we've got to hear from Sarah Barnes on this, this, this matter. Can you make sure they can speak?
Chairman? Oh, thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, sorry. We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of feedback. Can you make sure that there's no other audio in your office?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
John Pikarsky here.
Hey, John, how are you?
Very good, and a happy holiday to everyone. I'm concerned with numbers 437-20S and 438-20Z on page 7. 6411 North Northwest Highway.
Great, and yeah, what's happening with those?
I would respectfully request that this be continued to February.
Yeah, okay, we can grant that. It'll be February, it looks like February 19th, 2021. We will be continuing matters 437-20S and 438-20Z.
Good, thank you very much.
For sure. Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I found Sir Kupiak. I can hear you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, I can hear you.
Attorney Mark Kupiak here. I also have a request for a continuance. I've got, it's the last page of the agenda, page 9 on my copy. The first cases are related for the same project. Case number 343-20S and 344-20Z, both of the properties, 7625 South Kedzie. I, we recently got a request for some comments from the Department of Planning, and we'd like to continue this to give us additional time to respond to those questions and comments.
Yeah, so I understand we've continued this before. Do you think that by February 19th, 2021, you'll be ready?
February should be fine, and I was gonna suggest February because with the holiday, by the time we respond and they get back to us, February would make more sense.
Okay, yeah, that's great. We will be continuing matters 343-20S and 344-20Z. No further notice will be given, but we'll, we'll see you for that matter on those dates.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm here. Yep.
Hi, my name is Paul Kolpeck regarding case number 420-20S, page 4. We did receive comments from the plan commission. We spoke last night. We believe we would be ready for January if it's possible because there's some, just some minor changes. We are meeting out there tomorrow morning. But if it's February, that's, we can-
Yeah, one, one minute. Yeah, we'll, we'll fit you in on, on January, and it appears that the meeting day is January 15th, 2021. So that's for matter 450-20-S. It will be continued to January 15th, 2021. And no further notice will be given, but we'll see you that day.
Be well, everyone. Take care.
You as well.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Sarah Barnes.
Yep, I can hear you.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am here this morning on behalf of application number, matter number 442-20S for the proposed, for the proposed cannabis dispensary at 1420 South Michigan Avenue. Earlier in the week, Mr. Chairman, I submitted a written request for a withdrawal of this application. This has been pending for over nine months. It's, and due to some conditions and facts that came to light even within the last 10 days, and in consideration of all of the very entrusted parties, the applicant has decided to withdraw their application very respectfully. And if I may, since I hope that this takes a couple hours off of the ZBA hearing for everyone prior to the holiday, I would just like to extend my gratitude to your staff, Mr. Chairman, for their incredible efforts in maintaining and organizing not only a voluminous record, but also hundreds of emails and probably phone calls from all of the entrusted parties. I also want to extend that same gratitude to Alderman, Alderwoman Dowell, and Alderwoman King for their wonderful efforts in accommodating and facilitating community review and dialogue over the course of this many months, and also to Counselor Moore for his ongoing professional courtesy, and to his clients for their interest in this proposal. It's been a long several months, but in the end, this is the best decision for all those involved, and hopefully, everyone can enter the holidays with a little bit more peace in their hearts and some rest. And then lastly, happy birthday, Mrs. Knutson. I hope you have a beautiful day, and we won't keep you in Zoom land for too long. Thank you.
You're appreciated. Thank you, Counselor. And I'll, I'll second the counselors. Thanks to Victor, Janine, and Jeanette, because there was a pretty heavy push, and I know on, on your end as well, but, so thank you, Janine, Jeanette, and Victor, for the hard work you did on this matter and the hard work that you continue to do, so. Alright, any other continuances? Oh, I should note, apologies, I should note, anyone who was signed in to object for that matter, the dispensary at 1420 South Michigan, please sign out. You can, if you want to watch our meeting, feel free to log in via the livestream on our website, but please sign out as being a attendee on the Zoom call, as you, you won't be speaking. Any other continuances? Sounds like none, so let's get started. The first matter that I will call today is matter 406-20-S. And we'll start with the Department of Planning and Development reading their recommendation. So let me see, Jeanette, when you are present, let me know.
Good morning. I am present.
Great. Jeanette, will you please state your, your, your name and role for the record here?
Yes, my name is Jeanette Velasquez, and I am a project coordinator for the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, and Jeanette, do you swear to affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings today?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. So if you could go ahead and read the department's recommendation for 406-20-S.
The department's recommendation for 3051 West Sirmack Road is they recommend approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics. And lastly, the proposed salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you. And with that, do we have Mr., I think it's Mr. Guzman, present for the matter 406-20-S?
Mr. Guzman is here. He just has to unmute himself.
Mr. Guzman, if you can hear us, please just unmute. Looks like you're unmuted. Mr. Guzman, can you hear me? Let's see, I see you. I do not hear you. One minute, everyone. It seems like they're beyond this matter. Some people are having technical issues. Mr. Guzman, it seems like your audio's not working. If you could possibly try to log out and log back in, or use your phone, yeah. We'll, we'll get it working. Mr. Guzman, how about this? Take your time. We'll make sure that your audio gets working. I'm gonna hop to the next matter, and then we're gonna come back to you. Okay, so now I'm gonna hop to matter 407 and 408-20Z. So Counselor Tom Moore, let me know when you are present and ready. Or Mr. Stein?
I believe Mr. Moore is on. Tell me who's gonna be on.
Mr. Moore is here. Also, Chairman, the previous gentleman has dialed in.
I'm here, hello?
Who's speaking?
It's Mr. Stein and Mr. Gibbess here.
Yeah, so what we're doing, please just state your name while you speak, so we know who's talking.
My name is Tom, my name is Tom Moore, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Ruben Stein and his architect, Powell Gibbess, if they're here.
Yes, we're here. I'm here.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, did you want to swear the witnesses?
Yeah, for sure. So, Mr. Mr. Stein, if you could please state your name and address on the record?
Ruben Stein, 2939 West Jarlath Street, Chicago, Illinois 60645.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Joined by Mr. Mr. Gibbess?
Yes, present.
Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Pavel Gibbess from Studio G Architects, 125 East Lake Street, Suite 106 in Bloomingdale.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gibbess. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Alright, I believe that's, that's all we have. So, Counselor Moore, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Tom Moore, and Mr. Stein, you're a native of Memphis, is that right?
Yes, sir.
But you're married, tried and true Chicago girl, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir.
And you now have five children?
Yes.
And happy wife, happy life. Your wife persuaded you to move back to Chicago, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And you, UNC bought the house at this address? And, but the house had been inhabited by a single male who had a little, a little kitchen that you couldn't even fit two people in, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So you want to build a addition to this house, two stories, one to expand the kitchen and make it a family room as well, and also to have a bedroom so that you and your wife could have some privacy and have room for your five children, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And your problem is you're dealing with an older house that has existing wall lines which are closer to the, the side yard setbacks than would currently be allowed, and you want to just extend those walls further out, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And when you do that, you will impinge a little bit on the rear yard open space. So the second case is to allow you to reduce the rear, rear yard open space, is that right?
Yes.
And you're going, you've hired an architect to comply with all of the codes and ordinances of City of Chicago, is that right?
Yes.
And you and, you actually filled out a full affidavit where you addressed all of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the relief you're requesting. And if you were to continue to testify, testify consistently with that affidavit, is that right?
Yes.
That's all I have of Mr. Stein. Mr. Gibbess, you're, you're an architect-
That's right.
Licensed in the state of Illinois, is that right?
Yes. Yes.
And, um, you, uh, took on Mr. Stein, the Stein family's, uh, project here, and you've designed a, uh, a, uh, proposal that will comply with all ordinances, and in your opinion, it'll fit right in with the character of the, uh, neighborhood and not have any negative effects, is that right?
That is correct.
And, uh, consistent with that, you, uh, signed a, a statement, an affidavit, that addressed all of the criteria necessary for this board to grant that release, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
That's correct.
And Mr. Chairman, that's all we have, uh, but both of these gentlemen are available for questions.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. So I, I know we've got good images in front of us, but could you just, um, describe, so the rear deck, it, it really, it's, it's not flush with the ground, but it's off of the first floor, correct?
That is correct, yes.
In understanding that these are, um, at least the first variation is relatively a, a small set back reduction, um, can you describe a bit about what your hardship would be if this is not approved?
Is that, is that to me, I'm sorry?
Uh, yeah, Ruben.
Okay, um, this is Ruben Stein, um, the, 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 for the rear setback, that was the question?
Yeah, I, I guess I would, I would ask about both setbacks. What, what do you have to do construction-wise differently if we don't approve of these variations?
So i- it changes the, um, it changes the layout for sure, because one of the things that we had to add in was for sec, for safety, um, per, per the Chicago, um, rules were, was the second set of stairs, because the square footage is, is added that much more. And to accommodate the second set of stairs, we changed the layout. So by altering the, um, the squ, the, the small squ, even though it's relatively small, square footage on both sides of the house, it affects, it really will affect the stairs, um, which ultimately, it, it, the way I had talked about it with, with, uh, with our team was, our team, me and the architect and my wife, um, the was, um, is the stairs would be smaller, so it would, it would make them less safe, but, um, I mean, the, the house right now, the existing house, we're not going past the existing house, and there's an addition that goes back, and we're not, that, but it's only for like really half of the house. So we're going, we just wanted to fill in, I guess, that sort of empty space where the house ends and the addition ends, if that makes any sense.
You're basically squaring off the house.
Okay, and you said, so the addition that's currently existing, it's just not in good shape, so that's just part of the renovation that's happening?
Yeah, it's, yes, so the addition goes out, so that's where we're, that's where we would be going out to. I don't know if that addition was, was done, you know, con, I mean, that was, that was before we, we were here.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito, uh, can you describe the communication that you've had with your neighbors on either, both sides?
Yes, um, I have talked at length, even well before, um, this project got started. Um, they both were, I mean, just absolutely fantastic people, all of my neighbors are, excuse me, all of my neighbors are. Um, we, we altered a couple of things to, to make sure that we, you know, made everyone happy. And, um, they had absolutely no problems, and they wished us well, and they, you know, and, and we're, I mean, they're, they're fantastic people on both, on both sides, all sides.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Sounds like none, um, so thank you, Mr. Stein, for, um, for coming today, and we will take this matter under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
So now I'm gonna circle back, um, to matter four oh six dash twenty dash S, um, Mr. Guzman, let me know if you're, uh, able to speak now.
Hello.
Hi, is that Mr. Guzman?
Yes, this is Mr. Guzman, how is everybody doing?
Great, great, thank you, I'm glad that the audio got worked out. So, um, I just wanna state for the record that the Department of Planning and Development has read the recommendation on this matter, and it is on the record. Um, so now, Mr. Guzman, if you could please state your name and address?
Uh, Jonathan I. Guzman, thirty fifty-one West Sirmick.
And, uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, um, what brings you here today?
Excuse me, can you repeat that?
Yeah, what, what brings you here today? Um, tell us a bit about your application.
Yes, so, um, I, uh, about six, five months, six months ago, I, uh, I was, uh, told about a space, uh, in my neighborhood, in, uh, Little Village, Longdale area, that was available right next to our Lady of Tepeyac Church. I thought that the space was great, and I spoke to the landlord about zoning, and, um, you know, I decided to embark on a business, uh, adventure, combining, um, a number of different things that I'm interested in, mainly, uh, the hair industry, and also, um, art, music. And, um, I sent in an application, and due to the city ordinance, um, there's another shop about a block away, I was, uh, denied. So, you know, I'm a pretty persistent person, I decided to follow through and see if I could, um, get a special use permit, and, um, that's what brings me here today.
So I guess, uh, just as a list of a few questions, um, we understand from your application that, um, if you wanna have three stations, it looks like three stations within the, this salon?
Yes.
Okay, and can you tell us a little bit about your experience, um, experience in the industry?
Um, yeah, well, you know, my mom did hair, uh, so I've always been around the hair industry. Um, a few years ago, I bought into a barber shop, um, in Tulsa, on Eighteenth Street, and I conducted business with them for about seven years, and, um, you know, some differences within the partnership made me decide to sell, and, uh, I'm currently in school, I work with, uh, Capelli Academy of Cosmetology and Barber Arts, um, to complete my hours, uh, so I, I've been around the industry for my entire life. I just only recently decided to pursue a solo business, uh, me and my partner and my girlfriend are getting into this.
Great, so it, will you have, um, will you have employees, um, or how many, how many people have intend to work?
Um, well, at the shop, I hope to have three chairs, and also, um, there's gonna be a retail section. So I, I don't, I don't want to have employees, I would, uh, want to pursue a independent contractor. Um, but yeah, for three, three hair professionals, and I, I would potentially, I would be the person that deals with the management of the shop.
Okay, great, so it might be that, uh, it might be that you're not, you're not personally cutting hair?
No, no, I, I plan to staff, um, the school down the street has, uh, has a lot of, um, uh, people who have freshly graduated, and I wanna work with them to help them, uh, transition over to the professional field.
Okay, great. Question we're, we're asking all of our special use for salon applicants lately, but, um, what type of thought have you put into, uh, precautions within your salon, um, related to COVID?
Right, well, see, the, the reason I only wanna put three chairs up, um, and spaced apart is for that, uh, same reason. I, I don't believe that having a barber shop or a salon that has six, seven chairs is anything that's a good idea, considering the COVID, we don't want too many people in one place, so having three chairs spaced apart will limit the amount of people that are gonna be in the shop to begin with. I also, um, you know, I am gonna build the stations, I'm going to build everything, and I have things in mind to use specific type of materials, for instance, stainless steel stations, so that they're easier to clean and to remove any type of bacteria, among other things, I was also, you know, um, there's pictures of barber shops in the nineteen twenties and the nineteen, um, during the, the pandemic, uh, with the Spanish flu, where literally, um, like booths, and they were separated by walls, you almost had like, what are they called, like, um, like office stations, um, where it's not a, a separate room, but there is separation. I'm exploring all those different types of ideas to, to make sure that it's, uh, safer, considering the pandemic.
Great, um, great, and then, so, and do you intend to, um, have anyone, uh, cutting hair or getting their haircut wearing masks?
Oh, yeah, of course, masks and gloves, and, um, you know, follow all the guidelines, I know that, mm, barber shops aren't allowed to use shaves anymore, they're not allowed to make shaves or, or hot towels, you know, to prevent bacteria spread.
Okay, great, um, any other questions from the board from Mr. Guzman?
Yes, I have one, this is Jolene Saul, can you just, um, talk about, you mentioned there'd also be an art and, um, music component?
Yeah, well, um, I'm a, I'm a musician, so I'm a music aficionado, and, uh, Little Village is a, a Mexican community, and, uh, the vinyl, the, the pressing vinyl, um, you know, the classic way that we used to listen to music, um, is, is making, has made a comeback in the last couple of years. Um, I actually have a very big collection of records, uh, specifically in the Spanish language, and I want to, uh, have a retail section in the shop where I will be having records for sale, as well as, you know, um, hair products and T-shirts, uh, marketing materials, things of that sort. Um, and the art, so, uh, I come from Eighteenth Street, there, that's a big, uh, art district in the city, and as a previous barber shop that I had, when, when I decided to decor, um, a lot of my friends are artists, and I didn't want to, I didn't wanna go to Target or IKEA and buy some, you know, generic mass-produced art that would just, you know, wouldn't mean anything, so instead, I actually reached out to people in the community so that they could provide their art, and I didn't, I never had any intention of making a sale of art in those days, but that happened, people began to, to show interest, and they, they asked about the art. So in, in this time, with, with this current project, I do have the intention of, uh, you know, being an art dealer and allowing my space to be a place where artists from the neighborhood, and local artists from all over the country, to be able to, uh, you know, to showcase their art, and at the very least, if they don't sell, at least, you know, people got to see it. But my focus is specifically on local artists and the sale of their art to my space.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Sounds like none, um, so Mr. Guzman, thank you for your time today and for coming, um, we'll take your matter four six dash twenty dash S under consideration.
Thank you so much.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, Saul.
Okay, we're now gonna be calling, uh, matter four oh nine dash twenty dash Z at, um, twenty-one fourteen West Belmont Avenue. Mr. Lieberman, when you're present, just let me know. Uh, it looks like Mr. Lieberman's a panelist, maybe we're having, um, some sound issues.
Mr. Lieberman, you, you're using your phone also for audio, you have to press star six on your phone to unmute.
There you go.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, is this, uh, Mr. Lieberman?
Hello, I apologize about that.
No worries, um, so if you could just please state your name and address?
Evan Lieberman, two one one four West Belmont Apartment one.
Great, and Mr. Lieberman, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um, so what brings us, brings you here today, tell us a bit about your application?
So we purchased a, uh, new apartment, a new construction building in February, and, uh, the garage roof is, uh, uh, built to accommodate a roof deck structure. Uh, the builder of the building did not connect the, uh, or create any access to the actual garage roof deck, and, um, he, uh, essentially made it the responsibility of the property owner, um, after new construction, to, uh, build out that space. In the, uh, uh, rules and regulations for the building, it is considered to be a limited common element for the benefit of my unit only. Uh, no other units in the building are able to use it. Uh, so we, um, attempted to go through the process of building out the garage roof deck, and, uh, the attachment to the garage roof deck left us, left us really with two options. Um, option one was to create a staircase along the side of the building, or option two was to create a catwalk or access bridge from the existing steel staircase, uh, to the garage roof deck structure. Uh, the purpose for the variation is that, uh, due to a, a technical interpretation of the zoning rules, that creating that access bridge would be considered a continuous structure, and that continuous structure would essentially be reducing the setback to only, uh, to two feet. Um, i- if Jeanette stays on that picture, um, that you see right there, um, that is where the access bridge will go across, and, um, if you create a staircase in that gravel area, uh, we'll lose common space, that's, uh, essentially property of all the common elements in everybody in the building. Um, if you create an access bridge, which is the picture on the right, from that steel staircase to the garage roof, um, you're only talking about just a couple feet of, uh, of steel, and it's about a quarter of the price to do it, and in addition to that, we don't take up the common space that has been, uh, provided to all of the other units of the building. Um, one of the biggest concerns is that this building has children in it, and we, um, want to keep the children in the common fenced-in area as much as possible, and to keep them away from Belmont Avenue, which has, uh, according to the City of Chicago, eighteen thousand seven hundred cars a day passing by my apartment. Uh, so I, uh, so that's the whole basis for this, um, uh, for this variation application, and appreciate your consideration.
Yeah, thank you, so, uh, one thing that comes to mind, so what you're saying is, um, if you were to build a staircase, um, instead of a connector, um, it would take up some of this rear yard space that, uh, is being used by other, other people in the building as well?
Correct, and, and because this, the roof deck is a limited common element, the common space that I would be taking away from other units is, um, only going to be for my benefit. So it's to my benefit and to the debt, into their detriment, which I, I personally don't think is fair, since there's a totally, totally reasonable other way to do this without harming the other, uh, the other tenants.
Okay, yeah, so you were sold this property with the roof space, uh, kinda designated as a limited common element?
Correct, for my benefit only, or my unit, my unit's benefit only.
Yeah, um. Well, tricky, it, we talk about, a lot about these connectors, and it sounds like you're probably aware, but, um, building developers should not really be, um, selling units with these assurances that they'll have some option to get straight from their unit to the roof. Um.
And that was uh to clarify, that was not provided as an assurance. When after we moved in, we knew that there were options for connecting to the roof deck. Um we wanted to choose the option that was to the best benefit of all of the tenants in the building, considering that it was a limited common element. And post purchase for the other units. We didn't want to harm their property values or take away any of their benefits just for my, for our own benefit when there was another. A totally safe and um essentially practically equivalent um connection. Uh I would like to also add that I, uh one of the other exhibits are all of the other properties that are adjacent to mine. That have the connector between them because I believe that they do have um a similar circumstance to what we have.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm brainstorming this a little bit. Any questions from the board meantime?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Uh on what floor is your apartment located?
So um mine is a bi-level apartment. Um I have the uh essentially first floor and basement.
Okay, thank you. And uh do you know the measurement above grade that the bottom of the connector runs across to the garage? You know, how many feet above grade will that be?
That is um in here, yeah, as one of the exhibits. I realize that it's a little hard to see. Um it is, it's essentially one and a half stories uh tall. Is it, um I will have to pull it up because that image is a little smaller than uh than I can see to uh to that exact measurement, but it's one and a half stories.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Lieberman, did you use a um a certified architect for these plans? We're used to seeing um stamps that state. Um who the architect was when we get plans like these?
Yes, I have a licensed architect and he is on the um zoning, uh sorry, he's on the permit application. And all the documentation provided uh upon the original permit. I do have his license number as well. I provided digital versions of these in light of COVID in the way that these meetings are being prepared. Uh so that I could do it most expeditiously. But there is a licensed architect who has controlled all of the design, planning. And um in specifications for all of these elements.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you. Just I know it's probably, it's in the permit somewhere, but what's his name or the group's name?
So his name, I I I prefer to spell it for you because unfortunately I I, he goes by Adam, but his name uh has a a uh more complicated spelling. It's A N D R Z E J. And his last name is K A C P R Z Y N S K I. And his license number is one zero two one six eight six.
Uh this is Commissioner Esposito. Um was that architect involved in the original design of the building itself? I'm just curious.
No, I um this is a uh different architect than the building's architect.
Do you know who that might be by any chance?
I don't have that architect's uh that architect's name for the building now because the, this was a secondary project after the completion of the building. Um the um that architect was not uh was not directly consulted.
Thank you.
Hi, this is uh Jolene Saul. So can you um, what is the? I guess would be the the width of the that area in the back compared to the width of, if you had to do stairs, how wide stairs would be? Do you know that?
So what you're looking at there is approximately, and I think the plaque shows that the best uh total space between the structures. Um is, I believe around eleven, I ha- I believe it's around eleven or twelve feet. And since the staircase jumps out pretty far from the building, the connector you're talking about is only about six feet.
Um.
In this, in staircase, um I would have to review uh code for what the minimum size is for a staircase. Um but the uh it would be a minimum code width for a staircase, which I'm assuming is approximately three, three feet or so.
Okay, thanks.
So if we could, I I just wanna um think through this potential hardship a bit more. So I understand that. Um. Part of it is to make sure that everyone has that shared space to the same extent um in the back. Um. You know, it's a little bit different, of course, with city properties, like assuming there's, there's, there's nearby parks. Um and when those, those individuals bought their unit, units, I'm sure if they reviewed in depth. They would know that this could have happened, that a staircase could be put up.
Um I I assume that that's possible, but the one thing that I would like to mention about that particular fact. Is that considering that it was new construction, um the HOA had not been turned over to the unit owners. Prior to the time that they um had prior to or at the time that they moved in. So um when I purchased the apartment, one of the conditions of the purchase was that the builder. Would write into the HOA documents, which was not previously there, that I would be permitted to uh to build. Um uh essentially build the the roof deck, either a connector or staircase or any other uh approved uh type of connection. So at the time, presumably it's possible, but those words were actually not in the uh the actual bylaws of the HOA. Um it was amended subsequent to them and they actually had no say into this because the builder still controlled the uh the HOA.
Okay, and and question because obviously we're familiar with these, a lot of these people, but who was the builder?
Uh PNA Construction. I believe that stands for Peter N. Allen is the name.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, it sounds like none. Um we will take this matter under consideration and thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much and uh thank you for hearing my case.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, bye bye.
All right, um we are going to now move uh to. Four ten dash twenty dash S at sixty two seventy eight West North Avenue. So Mr. Saul is on the line. Um she will read the recommendation of the Department of Planning and Development and then we'll get started.
Once again, my name is Jeanette Velazquez. Um I'm here to read the recommendation letter. Uh for the Department of Planning and Development in regards to sixty two seventy eight West North Avenue. Uh the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of a proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance. Is in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds that hair salon would be compatible with the character of the surrounding area. And it is also designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you, Ms. Velazquez. Um do I believe if we have a, is Mr. Cole present?
Yes, I am here.
Hi, Mr. Cole. Um can you please state your name and address for the record?
Damon Cole, uh address sixty two seventy eight West North Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Wonderful. So um tell us a bit about your application.
Well, I was here to um seek a special use license for uh for my barber shop because. Uh um I had decided to um open a barber shop and I had looked around the area to um see what was going on. I didn't, I didn't see any barber shops in the area, but when I um set in for application, I was denied because they did say. That it was a braids shop within the area that was too close to me. And so I spoke with the lady at the braids shop and. Well, actually the braids shop had, lady had left, but it was just some other things that was going on. She was still had a license there, so. But I spoke with her and she gave me her approval that she didn't mind me opening a barber shop um close to that area. And so that was, I just seeking my special use to try to get things started.
Okay, great. And um can you tell us a bit about your experience um in the barber shop industry or any skill set related to doing hair certifications, et cetera?
Yes, well, I am a licensed barber and I started, I started back in two thousand five. So it's about fifteen years of experience that I've had. Uh my brother also had his own barber shop that I would manage. So I do have management and experience of owning a barber shop and things of that sort. So I've been doing it. For like over a decade, I could say.
Great. Um and with this, with this particular proposed barber shop, um how many, I I see eight stations. Is that kind of what you expect?
Yes, that is what I'm expecting uh at the moment. At the moment, only um it's only me and one other guy that has promised to come um work with me. So it's only two of us at the moment.
Okay, and do you expect to um to grow out to to more technicians or are the stage, some of the stations more so just for um uh fitting? Or do you, I guess I should rephrase. Do you ever expect?
Yeah, I were, I'm my um, I really expect to do about five stations realistically. And the others are just like fillers to make sure it make the, so the space don't look empty. So it doesn't look empty and things of that sort.
Yeah, okay, great. Um and can you, can you talk a little bit about precautions that you're gonna take related to COVID?
Well, because when I'm related to co- towards COVID, comes with each um client that comes in, you know, gives them sanitizer, sanitize their hands. And everything, everyone will wear masks and gloves. And there will be appointments only to make sure that no one's in the shop at the same time to prevent people from, you know. Being cluttered up in the shop, there will be appointments only. Also, once every, every, after every client is serviced, there will be. Sanitation of the, of the chair and of the station.
Great, great. And um what what do you, what are your intended hours? I I I believe you, I I believe you put in your application. I just missed it in my notes.
Um it was going to be from about seven to seven, seven AM to seven PM.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Mr. Cole, it sounds like there's none. Um so we'll take this under consideration and thank you very much for your time today.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, have a happy holidays.
You too, now.
Okay, great. Next matter up is matter four eleven dash twenty dash Z at twenty five eighteen West Diversey. Counselor Barnes, let me know when you're on the line.
Am I there? Mr. Chairman, it's Sarah Barnes.
I can hear you. I can.
Okay, I cannot see me. So as long as you can hear me, um.
Yeah, we can see you as well on our.
Oh, lucky you. Um I are the witnesses here. I should have an Aiden Desmond as well as Arturo Delgado.
Yes, they're all here.
Okay, perfect.
Good, we can just get them on the record. Um uh Mr. Desmond, are you, are you present and able to speak?
Aiden, are you there? Can you unmute yourself?
If he's on a phone, I believe Kamal, is it that he needs to push star?
Present.
Ah.
Chairman, okay, all right.
All right, Mr. Desmond, can you um please state your name and address for the record?
Aiden Desmond, one oh three four four South Tealy, Chicago.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Wonderful. Uh thank you. And then also is uh the other, is is Mr. Delgado present?
Yeah.
Great, Mr. Delgado, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Arturo Delgado, uh eight twenty four Racine Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great. Um Counselor Barnes, unless there's anyone else, uh you can take it away.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um once more, for the record, my name is Sarah Barnes and I'm an attorney with the Law Offices of Sam Banks. Located at two twenty one North West Side Street. I'm happy to be here this morning on behalf of the applicant of their Alverna Development. Joining me, as you have already been introduced, is Aiden Desmond, the managing member of the applicant. As well as one of our project architects, Arturo Delgado. Um towards that end, Mr. Chairman, and for some clarification, the managing architect for this project is Ron Berry. On whose behalf, we previously submitted an affidavit in support of our findings of fact. Unfortunately, Mr. Berry had a medical appointment um today, which prevents him from being able to be present and take part in this hearing. Um Mr. Delgado, however, um was very intimately involved with the creation and development of the programming for this project. And is familiarized with the findings of fact accordingly and can answer any questions.
Great, um that's, that's fine with us, of course. Always best to have the architect on, but we have his report.
Okay, great, thank you. And we are here before you today seeking a couple of modest setback reductions. Which are necessary in order to permit the construction of a new four-story, eight-unit residential building. With an interior attached garage as well as a detached garage at the subject site, which has remained vacant and unimproved for many years. Thereby creating an undesired condition for the other property owners in the area, many of which are residents and homeowners. On the site you see is the vacant fenced-in site above. Um this site is a little unique from the onset in that it is located on a block. Um actually, a series of blocks where all of the properties have a B underlying, underlying zoning classification. Which includes the subject property. The unique condition, however, is that this particular site is the only property among many that is situated immediately adjacent to a lone wolf. Single parcel that carries an R zoning class classification. Even though the existing improvements in the neighborhood, including on this stretch of Belmont Avenue. Are almost all wholly and predominantly residential in nature. The reason that this feature is important is that it creates one of the hardships that the applicant's design team had to overcome in developing. The programming for the proposed new building, which such building is completely consistent with all of the other existing improvements on the block and in the neighborhood. on the block and in the neighborhood, in particular, the immediately adjacent building. The hardship, therefore, is that if the subject property was not situated adjacent to an R-zoned parcel, then the building would not carry any front or side setback requirements. Um, and those are the only setback requirements from which we seek a little bit of relief. And, um, I would like to give the design team a lot of credit here. They have, they went above and beyond to get creative in order to overcome those setback conditions, which again would not even apply and have not applied to any of the other buildings, our properties on the block. Um, as you see, the design above shows that the building at the front part for over fifty percent of the building actually is setback or set in, inset on both sides, um, so that they act, the building actually meets the side setback requirements, um, for over fifty percent of the building. It's not until you get to the rear that the building is elongated along the width of the lot, and that is necessary in order to provide the required onsite off-street parking, um, for the project. And since it is going to be residential, um, and condominiums likely that therefore the secured interior parking, i.e. in a garage, um, is desired by residents for safety reasons. So as a result, again, the rear of the building had to be inflated. So the rear of the building is actually the only portion that encroaches on those side setbacks, which once again would not be required if we didn't have the adjacent, um, property, uh, zone residential. Um, the other creative way that the design team tried to overcome those setback requirements is with regard to the front portion of the building, which as you see from the application, we did have to seek a minor or a pretty modest setback reduction for the front. Um, and that is in order to place the required secondary means of ingress and egress within the building. That secondary stair structure that you see that runs down the core of the building, um, is actually required for all multi-unit buildings and it needs to provide access to every single unit within the building. Since there's, um, units on each side of the building, therefore it had to run down the core of the building and that is the only portion of the front, or the only portion of the building actually that encroaches again in that front setback. Um, the remainder front facade is actually setback in excess of the requirement. Um, and both such conditions are setback even further than the immediately adjacent residential building. So, um, despite the small request for relief, or what we deem as small request for relief, the proper, or the building is completely consistent with, and actually, um, even smaller in scale than most of the other buildings, especially on this block of Diversey Avenue. And like I said, the design team did take great efforts, um, in order to overcome those side setback, side setback and front setback requirements in, um, the design for the building. So with that kind of small summary of the hardships, I will get my witnesses on the record and then if you have any follow-up questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Um, Mr. Desmond, may you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Aiden Desmond, one oh three four four South Seeley Avenue, Chicago.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond. And as already stated, um, you are the managing member for the applicant. Is that true?
Yes.
And you actually were also intimately involved with your design team in creating the programming for this property. Is that also right?
Yes.
Um, and this is a property which again has remained idle and vacant for many years. Is that true?
Yeah.
So you will be reactivating a site that's kind of been a nuisance in the neighborhood, um, for several years. Is that also correct?
Yes, that's right.
And towards that end, you've made quite a significant investment in this property. Is that true?
Yes, I have.
An even more significant investment on, towards the construction of the proposed improvements. Should these variations be granted? Is that right?
Correct, yes.
Um, so with that, Mr. Desmond, prior to the hearing, you were provided with a copy of findings of fact as well as an affidavit. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in those documents?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Delgado, may you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Arturo Delgado, eight twenty-four North Christina Avenue, Chicago.
Delgado, and you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois. Is that correct?
That's right.
And, um, you worked very closely with, um, the managing architect, Ron Berry, towards the programming for this project. Is that true?
That's right. Yes, that's right. That's correct.
As I briefly described to the board, um, you had to get a little bit creative for this one in overcoming the setback requirements. Is that right?
Yes.
And that, those hardships actually drove your design for the building. Is that true?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, um, thank you. I don't want to belabor this too much if we're getting redundant, Mr. Chairman. So, um, I'll just ask Mr. Um, Delgado one more question and then we can open it up to the board. Um, Mr. Delgado, in your professional opinion, does the proposed design for this building meet all of the standards and requirements for a variation as set forth under the current zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And lastly, Mr. Delgado, you also were given an opportunity to review the findings of fact as well as Mr. Berry's affidavit that was submitted prior to this hearing. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in those documents?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we're happy to answer questions.
Great. Um, yeah, Counselor Barnes, I just am trying to see the difference between, I know there was a, a variation for development at this property back in two thousand eight and you included these in, um, in the findings of fact. Is it just, is the main difference of the project has changed a lot? I mean, it, it, from what's noted in that, um, historical record, um, it was a very different project than what it is now.
Yeah, the previous project was more akin to actually the building that's adjacent to us that, as you saw, was a little larger in stature. Um, obviously, over time, um, not, and a lot of the design for this building, coincidentally, um, Mr. Chairman, is due to amendments and revisions to the building code that have occurred over time. Um, for instance, that middle core stairwell, stairwell. Um, so that's why it changed. And then as well, the variations, um, lapse after a year. So we wouldn't have been able to resurrect that project either. And that was designed by a completely different owner and team.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board? Sounds like, sounds like they're none. Um, so we will take this matter under consideration and thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you so much. Merryest of holidays to everybody. Stay safe, mask up. Commissioner Estidito, enjoy the palm trees. See you next year.
Okay, next, um, I'm going to call matter four twelve dash twenty dash Z at sixteen fifty North Hallstead. So when Counselor Elizabeth Butler is present, just let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Um, can you hear me and see me?
Yeah, ye- yes, I can. Is this, is this Liz Butler?
Yes. Um, this is Liz Butler from the law firm of DLA Piper. We're located at four forty-four West Lake Street in Chicago. Our firm represents the applicant in this matter, the Steppenwolf Theater Company. I'm joined today by Brooke Flanagan, the executive director of the Steppenwolf Theater, Luay Abuna of KLOA, the transportation consultant for the project, and George Kissel of Ocre and Kissel Associates, Orlando use expert. Um, Mr. Chairman, will you be swearing in the witnesses now?
Yeah, I'll swear them in now just so that we can, um, continue in fluidity. Um, so, Mr. Kissel, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am.
All right, Mr. Kissel, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Uh, George Kissel, offices at one twenty-two South Michigan in Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. It looks like we have, um, uh, uh, Ms. Abuna or Mr. Abuna, sorry.
Luay, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Hi, Luay. Um, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Luay Abuna, last name spelled A B O O N A. Uh, I'm a principal of KLOA with offices at ninety-five seventy-five West Higgins Road in Rosemont, Illinois.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you so much. Um, Ms. Brooke Flanagan?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Ms. Flanagan. Uh, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Brooke Flanagan. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I'm the executive director of Steppenwolf Theater Company at seventeen hundred North Halsted Street, Chicago six oh six one four.
Thank you very much. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
All right, and finally, uh, Mr. Tobin, are you present?
Mr. Tobin is not with us today, so you have all of, all of the witnesses.
All right, great. Um, then, uh, Ms. Butler, you can, uh, carry on. Tell us a bit about this application.
Thank you. Again, for the record, this is, um, Liz Butler from DLA Piper. And let me start by saying that the Steppenwolf Theater Company is a cultural icon in Chicago. Uh, the theater has become the nation's premier ensemble theater. Powerful, groundbreaking performances have made this theater legendary. Steppenwolf operates as a not-for-profit organization, relying heavily on community support to produce up to sixteen plays and nearly seven hundred performances and events every year on its three stages. The theater is also known for its community partnerships that provide no-cost, barrier-free programming to educate and empower Chicagoland youth through the arts, providing teens the opportunity to learn about the inner workings of a professional theater and, um, gain mentorship from Steppenwolf staff. The theater relies heavily on, uh, uh, its subscription program to provide a sustaining baseline of funding. It's imperative for Steppenwolf to provide, along with world-class programming, a comfortable and convenient theater-going experience. Convenient parking is a key aspect of that experience, especially for, um, many of the theater's older patrons. It's for that reason that the applicant is requesting variations today with respect to its property located at sixteen fifty North Halsted Street, which you see on your screen, um, before you. Uh, we're seeking relief to modify the requirements of the landscape ordinance for an existing legal non-conforming seventy-five hundred square foot surface parking lot that serves the Steppenwolf Theater. Specifically, the applicant is requesting the following relief: a waiver of the requirement for interior landscaping. The requirement is approximately five hundred and sixty-three square feet and five trees. Waiver of the required seven-foot landscaped setback along Halsted. And a waiver to allow a four-foot-tall ornamental fence to be installed at the property line instead of five feet from the property line. The overall property contains, um, about sixty-nine thousand square feet of site area and it is zoned B three-two, community shopping district. There is a four-story mixed-use building to the north. Halsted Street, uh, is on the east. A surfing, surface parking lot is on the south and an eighteen-foot-wide public alley is on the west. In addition to the surface parking lot that is the subject of this request, the property is improved with the Steppenwolf campus and an existing parking structure that sits at the south end of the site. Steppenwolf, um, is in the second phase of a three-phase expansion project at the property. The first phase of the project involved the renovation of the seventeen hundred North Halsted Building, which is now the front bar café and a new eighty-seat performance venue. The second phase involves construction of a new theater-in-the-round building, um, at sixteen forty-six North Halsted. This theater will be a fifty thousand square foot building with a four hundred seat, uh, in the round theater, a dedicated education floor, a two-story atrium lobby, and Steppenwolf's costume shop, uh, along with updated production amenities. New areas of construction will be in compliance with the requirements of the landscape ordinance. Uh, for example, the applicant is intending to install street trees along Halsted and ornamental fencing along the east side of the surface parking lot, which is required by code. So while this project, uh, does not contemplate any revisions or changes to this existing surface parking lot, the construction of the new theater makes what is otherwise a legal, non-conforming surface parking lot subject to the current requirements of the landscape ordinance. And, uh, for the reasons that I will, um, I will discuss, Steppenwolf is seeking the requested relief in order to legalize the existing non-conforming condition of the surface parking lot. So when, um, the campus expansion project is complete, parking for the Steppenwolf campus will be provided, uh, in the garage structure at the south end of the site, which includes ninety-nine spaces and the surface parking lot that we're discussing today, which provides twenty-one spaces. Given that the garage structure has no elevator, all accessible parking for the theater, for all Steppenwolf, um, facilities, will be located on, in the surface parking lot. And while the total number of parking spaces on the site satisfies the requirements, the parking requirements from a zoning perspective, the, the actual needs of the, of, uh, the theater are, are driven by patron demographics for performances at the Steppenwolf. So strict compliance with the landscape ordinance here would result in a loss of six parking spaces from the surface parking lot. With an onsite parking capacity of only a hundred and twenty spaces and what will be a total seating capacity of nine hundred and seventy-five seats, every parking space is, is really needed and is important. Um, under current operating conditions, both the garage structure and the surface parking lot are filled to capacity when Steppenwolf is hosting performances. And while the theater is a Lincoln Park neighborhood institution, the theater actually draws its patrons from throughout the region. Very few patrons arrive for performances at the theater by public transportation. Uh, performances are generally held in the evening and at times that are not always well-suited, um, to arriving by public, public transportation. Many of the supporters and patrons of the theater are older, um, or live in the suburbs or, uh, city neighborhoods that are, are, are not well-served by public transit. So, um, in support of those facts, a parking demand analysis was prepared by KLOA and was submitted to this board in advance of this hearing. And that analysis concludes that the parking facilities that exist today are, um, not adequate to serve the demand for parking during, uh, Steppenwolf's peak season. So any further reduction of available parking spaces would result in a legitimate hardship on the Steppenwolf. As set forth in the witness statements, um, and the land use evaluation report and parking, uh, parking evaluation that were submitted to the board ahead of this hearing, this request meets the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance for approval of the requested variation. And except with respect to the modifications that are requested today, um, it's important to note that this project is, is an as-of-right project and no further relief is requested or proposed in connection with the expansion project. The project meets all of the other standards of the landscape and zoning ordinances. Steppenwolf's presence, um, in this community is, is a driver, uh, for the local economy. It attracts a significant number of visitors to the area who then patronize surrounding businesses. Preserving the existing parking inventory helps to ensure the theater's continued vitality, serving the public interest of preserving and maintaining economically vibrant, active and attractive business and commercial corridors. The applicant discussed the requested relief with Alderman Smith, who is in support of both the project and this, um, specific request for relief. You should have a letter of support in your file. We understand that was provided in advance of the hearing. Additionally, the applicant presented the full project scope, um, at a community meeting earlier in the, in the project in, um, twenty eighteen. And this specific request was discussed with immediate neighbors and we are aware of no objections to the request. Unless there are any questions from the board at this time, I'll produce, I'll, I'll, um, proceed to, uh, produce my witnesses.
Yep, go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll start. Okay, thank you. Um, I'll start with uh Ms. Flanagan. Ms. Flanagan, could you please state your name uh again and your title and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Brooke Flanagan. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I'm the Executive Director for Steppenwolf Theater Company, located at seventeen hundred North Halsted Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one four.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan, and uh DLA Piper, as your counsel, submitted proposed findings of fact and an affidavit signed by you in connection with this matter, um, correct?
That is correct.
And if uh you were to continue to testify today, your testimony would be consistent with the proposed findings of fact and your affidavit. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, unless there are any questions at this time for Ms. Flanagan, I'll turn to my next witness, um, who is uh Mr. Abuna. Um, Mr. Abuna, could you please state your name, um, title, and business address for the record?
Yes, Louis Abuna. Uh, I'm a principal with KLOA. Uh, the address is ninety-five seventy-five West Higgins Road in Rosemont, Illinois.
And, thank you. And you're a professional traffic and transportation engineer, and you have testified before this board on numerous occasions, correct?
Yes, I have.
Um, Mr. Chair, does the, does the board recognize um Mr. Abuna's expertise?
We recognize Mr. Abuna's expertise.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Abuna, you were retained by uh the Steppenwolf Theater to conduct a parking evaluation in connection with this requested relief, correct?
Yes, I, I was.
And you prepared a report detailing your analysis, your findings and conclusions with respect to the need and adequacy of the theater's parking supply. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and DLA Piper, uh, as applicant's counsel, submitted the proposed findings of fact and your report prepared by you in connection with this matter, right?
Yes, correct.
And if you were to continue to testify today, your testimony would be consistent with your report and the findings of fact, right?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Um, my next witness is Mr. Kissel. Um, I'll proceed to produce him for the board, and then we can open up for questions. Um, George, could you please state your name, title, and business address for the record?
Sure, my name is George Kissel. I'm the President of Oakland Kissel Associates with offices at one twenty-two South Michigan in Chicago. I'm a licensed architect and a certified planner with more than thirty-five experience, uh, years of experience in the field of zoning and urban planning.
Thank you, and you've testified to the board on numerous occasions, correct?
Yes, I have.
Um, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, does the board recognize um Mr. Kissel as an expert?
Yeah, absolutely. The board recognized Mr. Kissel, yeah.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Kissel, you were retained by the Steppenwolf Theater to conduct an urban planning analysis of the application for the relief that is being set with respect to the landscape ordinance, um, correct?
That is correct.
And you prepared a report that detailed your analysis, findings, and conclusions, correct?
That's correct.
And um, DLA Piper, as counsel for the applicant, submitted the proposed findings of fact, your C B, and your uh report and zoning analysis um to the board in advance of this hearing, correct?
That is correct.
And um, if you were to continue to testify today, your testimony would be consistent with the proposed findings of fact and your report, correct?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Um, I have no further witnesses, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, the applicant present, as I mentioned, the applicant presented the scope of the project at a community meeting. We uh understand that the alderman is in support of their request um and that you should have a letter in your file to that um effect. Our team is available to answer any questions that uh the board might have, and we appreciate your time and consideration of this matter.
Thank you very much, and um the board might have some questions. I, I have one question and um it's kind of low-hanging fruit, but I'm wondering if you could describe the um, the ornamental fence that's going into place?
Yeah, it's a, it's a four-foot-tall ornamental fence that will be um installed at the property line. That's a standard requirement of the landscape ordinance that must be installed um in any vehicular use area. So it'll be a typical, um, I actually don't have the specs in front of me, but it's, will meet with the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, great. Um, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. This is Commissioner Toya. You said you got a letter from the alderman, which is great, and you said you had a community meeting. Did you get any letters from uh any of the community groups or the business groups in the neighborhood?
Uh, we don't have letters um from any, any groups, but this is a project that has been ongoing for several years. Um, it's been very, very public. Um, as counsel uh for the applicant, I spoke directly with neighbors and provided plans to neighbors. Um, but we don't, we don't have um letters. There's a, there's a broad uh campaign for the Steppenwolf Theater. Um, and if there's anything that, that Brooke can add to this, she's, she had joined the Steppenwolf team in July of twenty-twenty, so she wasn't involved in the twenty-eighteen process. But um Brooke, is there anything that you can say about the level of support that you've received from um community groups?
Yeah, but my understanding is consistent with your um statement uh in that it uh, the project has been socialized both um with the alderman and with the Triangle Association. Uh, Steppenwolf is an active partner to uh neighborhood businesses, um, including um the, the restaurants along Halsted Street. Um, that when we are out of the pandemic world, we have a very um active and symbiotic relationship with. Um, and my understanding is that um the community uh and the neighborhood that surrounds Steppenwolf has been very supportive of the expansion project. Um, and certainly, uh, the project is held as a public interest. Um, as a nonprofit organization, we have been actively seeking funds um from uh Chicagoans to support the project, and through that have had an enthusiastic um lean-in from the community to advance this work, which will allow us to continue to be um a center, an art center, um, a generator of, of revenue through um parking and dining and activation in our network, and uh, and also through employment. Uh, and then further, uh, the education center that was mentioned as part of this current uh second phase of the project will invite youth from across Chicago uh to make this a place where they can continue to learn and grow through arts education.
And that sounds all great, and I'm sure it's all true. Uh, it's just you, uh, your counselor mentioned twice the alderman's name, mentioned the letter, so I always wonder, you know, we as the zoning board of people, we like to hear from the alderman, we love to hear from the alderman, but I personally, also, when we talk about the alderman and your counselor reaches out and you reach out to the alderman, I would expect that we should reach out and get a letter from the business group or the community group as well. Um, and because that's what I want to hear from. Again, I want to hear from the alderman, but I also want to hear from the community groups. And if we, if we took the, you know, uh, exercise to get a letter from the alderman, I think we should take an exercise and get a letter from the community or the business groups in the neighborhood as well, because I know there's an active business group in that neighborhood. And like you said, Stepping Wolf, I'm sure, you know, people that go there do support the restaurants. That's all great. I just wish we would have got a letter from the business group or the community group like we did from the alderman, and it was brought up twice. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I have one final question. It's another kind of general question, but um there's something that's a bit triggered in me whenever I see that we're waiving tree requirements. Um, so, and I understand that um, that you have requirements um with the landscape on the sidewalk. Um, but do you have any intent um to reproduce green space anywhere else on the property to make up for it?
So, the, the site is, is very limited by its um geometry. There really is no area for additional green space other than the, other than the street trees that are being installed.
Okay, and with the street trees, you're um, you'll be installing uh the complete required amount?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board? Sounds like none. Thank you, everyone, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now I want to hop to one more before a short break. Um, and that is going to be matter three, sorry, matter four thirteen dash twenty dash Z. Um, and that's at forty-five twenty North Virginia Avenue. I understand that we have some objectors here for this matter, so I want to just um uh read a little bit of instructions while everyone gets settled and before we start. Um, first, will everyone gets promoted, including um any objectors? Um, I want to remind everyone that this is not a town hall. This is a hearing, so we as the board are looking for evidence that either supports or does not support the applicant's case. Here is how this hearing is going to proceed. First, the applicant will put on their case and all of their witnesses. Then we'll turn to the objectors, and the objectors can put on their case as well as ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. After that, the applicant can ask questions of the objectors. Then we'll return to the applicant for rebuttal, testimony, and closing remarks. After that, the board will take the matter under advisement. Throughout the hearing, board members will be asking questions of both the applicant and the objectors. Um, and as always, board members feel free to ask questions at any time. So Counselor Duncan, let me know when you are present.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I just want to make sure you can hear and see me.
Can hear and see you. Thank you.
My name is Kate Duncan. I'm an attorney with Ackerman LLP with offices located at seventy-one South Wacker Drive. I'm appearing this morning on behalf of the applicants, Julia and Robert Bersiaga, in connection with the proposed application for variations for the property located at forty-five twenty North Virginia Avenue. Present this morning with me are applicant Julia Bersiaga uh and our, also our architect, Jordan Winkle. Um, Mr. Chairman, can I ask that you swear in the witnesses, please?
Absolutely. Um, Ms. Bersiaga, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is technically Julia Dryden, and my current address is four seven four zero North Sacramento Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two five.
Thank you, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great, and uh, Mr. Winkle, um, if you can uh, if you can speak, uh, please state your name and address for the record.
Certainly, my name is Jordan Wonkel. I'm the architect for the project. My uh address is thirty-four thirty-seven West Parker Avenue.
Great, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Duncan. Uh, you can uh begin.
Uh, the property currently contains a one-story, single-family home, and Julia and Robert are proposing to construct an addition onto the existing single-family home, along with adding an attached garage. The property is located in RS two district. In order to accomplish this project, Julia and Robert are requesting the following variations. One, to reduce the north side setback from six point five feet to six point four six feet, which is less than an inch. And number two, to reduce the overall combined side setback from nineteen point five feet to twelve point six seven feet. And number three, to reduce the rear setback from the thirty-five-foot required to twenty-eight point three three feet. In its original filing, applicant had also requested a south-side setback variation. However, um, our architect has managed to squeeze us, squeeze the garage in a couple inches um and still be able to fit two cars in it. And so we are no longer requesting the south-side setback, and we hereby wish to formally withdraw this variation request. Um, the south-side setback variation was only a matter of inches, and to accommodate the neighbor to the south, we've reduced our request so that we can meet the minimum zoning code requirement for a sideyard setback on that side of the home. So accordingly, we would like to ask to update our application on the record here and um ask that the variations requested therein please be acknowledged.
We acknowledge that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So regarding the, the request for the north and the combined side setback variation, uh, Julia and Robert are adding a second-story addition to the existing single-family home, which is a permitted thing to do under the existing zoning code, providing, provided the relief uh requested herein is granted. As you can see in the demolition plan that was submitted, they are saving the, the foundations of the existing home and saving um a majority of the existing exterior walls, particularly on the north side of the structure. As a result, the second-story addition to the home follows the existing north building wall, which is already setback at the six point four six-foot dimension from the north property line. And this is why we are requesting a variation for that side of the building to match the existing setback of the wall that is currently in place, just extending it up a second story. Please note that the minimum required setback is six point five feet, so we're only requesting a variation of approximately an inch on the north-side setback. Uh, the need for the reduction, the combined overall setback, also stems from the existing conditions of the building lines and foundations. While we do not need the south-side setback variation, because we can meet the minimum required side yard on the south side, the overall combined setback must be reduced by just under seven feet. The proposed home itself sits within the required overall combined setback. It's the location of our proposed garage addition that is controlling the encroachment into the overall combined setback. The Bersiagas would like to move the garage into the side yard as opposed to having it in the rear yard in order to have an attached garage. There are multiple reasons that the Bersiagas have requested this configuration. First, because a lot of butts, the Chicago River, there's no alley, and so the parking for the site must be accessed from the front of the home. Moving the garage into the side yard and out of the rear yard makes the driveway shorter and creates less hard surface on the lot. In turn, this will lead to less stormwater runoff into the river, and this also creates a larger usable rear yard open space adjacent to the river. Further, by leaving the existing foundations in place and adding a second story, the Bersiagas are constrained in how the garage fits onto the site, and so the existing structure is creating a hardship when trying to configure the garage into the site. Finally, moving the garage into the side yard is being done to accommodate Julia's mother, who has osteoarthritis and degenerative dis- disease. Julia is expecting that her mother is unfortunately soon going to be bound into a wheelchair and would like to make sure that her mom has weather-protected access from the garage directly into the house. Uh, as you can see in the drawings, uh, Julia is also building the home with an expectation that her mother will live with them in the near future in, in in-law suite, which is at the front of the building, and that's depicted on the first floor in the drawing. Regarding the request for the rear yard setback reduction, Julia and Robert are also proposing to extend the existing rear building wall up for a second story. They're not seeking to encroach the building any further than already exists into the rear yard. And the existing rear building wall is already at the twenty-eight point three three feet rather than the required thirty-five feet. There are rear decks proposed at both the ground level and the second story, but these decks are compliant with all zoning code requirements and do not cause any need for setback variations. Along with the findings of fact we submitted, we included affidavits of Julia Dryden, Bersiaga, and Jordan Wonkel, our architect. Uh, please note that we have spoken extensively with the neighbors surrounding the home. Earlier this week, we were informed by the VBA that several neighbors had filed objections to this case. And we did reach out to each of these neighbors after hearing of their objections and offer to meet with them each to more fully explain the proposed home and the need for the variations. Um, so we have had communications with them. They, they did not find it fit to meet. They were, they did not think it was necessary to meet. Um, but we have communicated with each of the objectors via email during the week here. And while we do not have their support for this application, unfortunately, we do believe that we have demonstrated in the findings of fact and through our testimony here today, um, that we meet the criteria required for the requested variations to be granted. I want to further mention that the objectors have raised objections about the character of the existing home and the neighborhood, but this particular building is not a Chicago landmark building or an oriented building, nor does it lie within a Chicago landmark district. And objections related to the character of the home, some, so, are somewhat referred, related to the aesthetics and the design of the home as opposed to the nature of the home, the two-story nature of the home and the bulk and density of this house compared with others in the neighborhood. Um, this project is not subject to a design review by DPD or the neighborhood, and so the proposed look of the home, though we argue that it is in keeping with the character of the architecture in the neighborhood, and in fact, our architects were very hard to be compatible with the aesthetic character of the neighborhood. The aesthetic qualities of the home are not the subject of the variation application. We do believe that this home is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood in terms of its bulk and density, as well as its position on the lot. And so now, Mr. Chairman, if possible, I'd like to have um Julia Dryden Bersiaga as my first witness.
Yeah, and um, Ms. Duncan, as a, as a quick clarification, so the south setback is no longer needed. What's happening with the combined setback?
Combined setback is still needed. We are meeting the minimum required on the south. We are an inch off the minimum required on the north. However, the zoning code requires an overall combined setback, which you would think the, the minimum required on the south and the minimum required on the north would equal that overall combined setback, but it does not. And so the overall combined setback, we still need a reduction in. So that is going from nineteen point five feet required to twelve point six seven feet, so just under seven feet.
Okay, thank you. Um, you can carry on. Thank you very much.
Okay, Julia, can you please state your name, spelling your last name for the record?
Uh, yes, so my name is Julia Dryden. Last name is D R Y D E N.
And what is your address?
Uh, my current address is forty-seven forty North Sacramento Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two five.
And are you familiar with the subject property? And are you familiar with the subject property?
Yes.
And what are you proposing to do with the subject property?
So my husband and I are proposing to add a second story to the existing house so that we can live in the house with our growing family. We're actually expecting our second baby in June. My husband's parents and his brother and family all live a block from this house. So we're looking forward to having our family all in close proximity as our children grow.
And why are you proposing to add a second story to the existing house as opposed to building new construction, which may make it easier for you to cite the house on the lot?
Yeah, so we're trying to make our money go as far as possible with this new home. After working with the architects, we realized that to build an entirely new home was going to be cost prohibitive for us. We couldn't afford to just tear down a structure and start from scratch. So we're trying to save money where we can by using the existing foundations and some of the existing building walls.
Okay, so speaking first about the request for a rear yard setback variation of the twenty-eight point three three feet, does the need for this variation stem from the fact that you're adding a second story to the existing home and the existing rear wall is already encroaching into the rear yard required setback?
Yes.
Okay. And are you just proposing to make the existing rear wall go up to a second story, not encroaching any further into the rear yard than already exists?
Yes.
Okay. And is the proposed height of the building in compliance with the Chicago zoning code?
Yes.
Okay. Speaking next about the north side setback variation, which is approximately an inch, does the need for this variation also stem from the fact that you're adding a second story to the existing home and that the existing north wall is already encroaching into that north side yard required setback?
Yes.
Okay. And are you just proposing to make the existing north sidewalk go up a second story again, not encroaching any further into the north side yard than already exists?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so now let's talk about the overall combined side setback. Are you reusing existing foundations of the home and portions of the existing walls of the home, which in turn constrains the boundaries of where you're able to construct the home on the site?
Yes, as I said before, we found that it was too expensive for us to build an all-new home. So we're trying to work within the foundations that exist on the property and doing our best to make the best home possible for our family within those constraints.
And you're requesting to attach the garage to the home within the overall combined side setback, though you're still meeting the minimum required south side setback. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And is part of the reason that you're moving the garage into the side yard, the fact that you don't have a rear alley, so you need to access the garage from the front of the property?
Yes.
Okay. And if you access the garage from the front of the home and leave the garage in the rear yard, would this create a longer driveway with greater paved surface on the site?
Yes, it would also significantly reduce the amount of rear yard open space that we would have on the site.
Okay. Can you also tell me a little bit about the other reasons you're hoping to attach the garage to the home?
Yeah, so my mom has a lot of stuff going on. She has osteoarthritis, severe degenerative disc disease, spinal stenosis. Right now she walks with a walker or a cane. Unfortunately, her condition continues to worsen. We expect her to be wheelchair-bound very soon. And as a result, we would like to have an enclosed garage that is attached to the home so that she's, you know, protected from weather when coming and going from the house. While my mom will not move in with us right away, we are building the house with an in-law suite on the first floor for her since we expect that she may need to live with us shortly because of her condition. And having an attached garage will make it easier for her to access the house.
So do all of these conditions create a hardship as distinguished from a mere inconvenience for you?
Yes, the hardship is that we are trying to reuse the existing foundations and many of the existing first-floor walls in order to build a house that will accommodate our family and my mom in the future.
And are all of these conditions due to unique circumstances? And did you yourself create any of these conditions?
Yes, all of these conditions, when taken together, make this a unique challenge for construction and we did not create any of these conditions.
And are you requesting these variations in order to make money out of the property?
No, we are planning to live in this house with our family. This house is in the forty-five hundred block of Virginia and Robert's parents and brother and his family both live on the forty-six hundred block of Virginia. So this will put us very close to his family and we intend to stay in this house for a very long time, if not forever.
If these variations are granted, will they alter the character of the neighborhood?
No, they'll very much conform to the character of the neighborhood. We definitely understand the charm of this neighborhood and have asked our architect to design a home that fits with the character of the neighborhood while allowing us to remain close to family and have a house to accommodate our growing family.
And will this building be detrimental to public welfare or injurious to other property in the neighborhood?
No.
And will this home impact light and air to adjacent properties?
I don't think so. We're not increasing the extent of the setback of the home into the rear or on the north side yard. And we've made sure to meet the minimum required setback on the south side so that we have the least impact possible on our neighbor to the south.
And do you understand that the existing house sits further into the rear than the house to the north, but this is an existing condition, right?
Yes, and we are only seeking to add a second story onto the top of the existing wall, not to further increase the extent of the home setback into the rear yard.
Okay. And will the proposed variations increase congestion or increase the danger of fire or endanger public safety or impair property values in your neighborhood?
No.
Okay. Will the proposed variations be in accordance with all other laws in the city of Chicago and in all laws in accordance with health, safety and public welfare?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have anything further of Ms. Dryden at this time. Can I next call Mr. Wonkel, please?
Go right ahead. Can we make one clarification? And I don't see it in the plans, but there will not be a second kitchen for the in-law suite. Is that correct?
No, no second kitchen for the in-law suite. You can see at the very front of the on the first floor. Yeah, if you could pull up the first level, there's a it's a study up at the front, but it shows a bed and a and a bathroom and closets. That's the in-law suite.
Great. Okay, thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Wonkel.
Yes.
Please state your name and spelling your last name for the record and tell us what your business or occupation is.
My name is Jordan Wonkel, last name W A N K E L, and I am the architect on the project.
And can you give us your business address, please?
It is thirty-four thirty-seven West Parker Avenue.
Okay. And are you familiar with the application for variations that's the subject of this hearing?
I am.
Okay, directing your attention to the drawings, can you please describe for the board the manner in which the subject property is proposed to be improved?
Yeah, our applicant is proposing to construct a second story addition to their single-family home on the property. Please note that the rear yard does not have an alley, rather a butts the Chicago River. So part of the this proposal is to bring it to shorten the driveway to the front of the property closer to the street.
And can you please detail the relief that's needed in accordance with your drawings?
Yes. To construct this home, we need to obtain a rear yard setback variation, a north side yard setback variation and an overall combined setback variation. As mentioned earlier, we were originally seeking a south south yard side setback variation as well, but we were able to shrink the garage by several inches in order to meet the required south side setback dimension, so we no longer need that variation. In designing the home, we were definitely constrained by the budget. That was one of the major design intentions. So while we initially did explore new construction, we found and realized that the working with the confines of the existing masonry walls and foundation would be better for our client's overall budget and then, you know, project intentions moving forward.
So does the need for the rear yard setback variation stem from the fact that you're adding a second story to the existing home and the existing rear wall is already encroaching into the rear yard setback requirement?
Yes, that's correct.
And are you just proposing to make the existing rear wall go up a second story, not encroaching any further into the rear yard than already exists?
That's correct as well.
Okay. Do you believe that this will impede an adequate supply of light and air for the neighbor to the north?
No, per the zoning code, the side setback minimums are put in place specifically for the purpose of ensuring the necessary adequate light and air.
So we're only asking for an inch on the north sidewall, is that correct?
Technically, you've asked seven sixteenths of an inch, to be precise.
And speaking next about the north side setback variation, does the need for this variation also stem from the fact that you're adding the second story and that the existing north wall is already encroaching that seven sixteenth of an inch into the north side setback?
Correct.
And so you're just proposing to make the existing north wall go up a second stair, go up a second story and you're not encroaching any further into the north side yard than already exists?
Correct. The seven sixteenths dimension, which is actually only present at the northwest corner, we actually grow as we go towards the east, is a matter of construction. It's just a better for the wall, better for the building to not have a seven sixteenths inch jog in in the masonry wall. So we're only proposing that the new wall be flush. It's a it's a water issue. Keep it flat and best.
And related to the need to reduce the overall combined side setback, are you reusing existing foundations of the home and portions of the existing walls of the home, which constrains the boundaries of where you're able to construct the home on the site? And does this then limit the placement of any additions to the home?
Yes, we're reusing the majority of the foundations on the east, north and west, which does save us cost, but it does, you know, create design constraints. If you think about the existing elements of the home that we're keeping as one bookend and the setbacks as the other bookend, we only have that space in between to work, work within. And in order to provide the Bersiagas with a garage that's attached to the home, it ended up kind of, it kind of put itself where it needed to be in order to make all these things happen.
And Jordan, the if you were not, the the home itself without the garage, is that within all of the required setbacks? Is that, does it fall within the overall combined required side setback?
Yes.
And so you're requesting to attach the garage to the home within that overall combined side setback, though you're still meeting that minimum required south side setback, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And is part of the reason that you're moving the garage into the side yard, the fact that you don't have the alley and so you need to access the garage from the front of the property?
That's correct.
Okay. And if you access the garage from the front of the home and leave the garage in the rear yard, would this create a long driveway with greater paved surface on the site?
It would. It would also significantly reduce the amount of rear yard open space that was alluded to earlier on the site. We believe that less paved area will lead to less runoff. We think it's better for the shoreline of the river also to not have a structure that close. You can see the topography start to drop off really fast to the west of the property line. And we should also note historically, the the river was a, when this home was built and these homes were built along the river, the river was not a place of recreation or enjoyment. It was a thoroughfare for sewage, for, you know, carcasses of animals. It was a, it was essentially a waterway alley. And so now, as new homes are popping up along the river, the tendency and the predominant gesture is to pull the garage out of the rear yard so that we can actually, you know, enjoy the river as we have we've seen with the new bike paths near the new boathouse there off of Western. The city's making advancements and trying to clean up the river, trying to promote river activities. We're starting to see more boats. And so the idea is the river is becoming a positive rather than a negative, which it was when these garages were, you know, had their back towards the river. So we see us in keeping now with the kind of the lineage in the future as the river being promoted as a, an attraction rather than a detraction.
So were there other considerations that the Bersiagas asked you to consider when designing the home?
Yeah, Julia's mom was the was the big one, was the reason that we wanted to try to attach it. And we found that in trying to figure out the placement for the attached garage, the only solution that really made sense was to move it out of the rear yard and, you know, based on the constraints that we talked about earlier, you know, we got it as far towards the front, closest to the street as we thought was appropriate. We're still, you know, set far back from the front of the home, so it's still not as, you know, prominent as it could be. And we're also roughly eighteen feet back from the street further than our adjacent neighbors' garages to the south.
So do all of these conditions create a hardship as distinguished from a mere inconvenience?
Yes, the hardship is that we're trying to reuse the existing foundations of the house. And we are including many of the existing masonry walls as well. Julia and Robert wants to stay in the neighborhood. Obviously, Robert's family lives just to the north. So we're trying to work within all these constraints. Use, you know, reuse as much the building as we can. Obviously, it's not only a cost savings, but it's a material savings as well. And so, yes, answer your question.
Will the building, will the building be constructed in such a way that it will allow for an adequate supply of light and air to the adjacent properties?
Yes, as previously stated, the side setback minimums are put in place by zoning code for the purposes of ensuring the necessary adequate light and air. Additionally, apart from the zoning code, the building code requires thirty inches minimum for existing buildings in natural light and vent or air, which we are definitely in line with that as well. And the north extension wall will provide more than double of what's required.
Will the building comply with all other applicable standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
Yes, we are compliant with FAR and building height and any other zoning, like bulk and density requirements.
Will the building design, will the building and its design promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes.
And is the proposed building compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning, building scale and project design?
Yes. And in my opinion, the building is compatible with the surrounding area.
Can you give us a little more detail about the bulk and density of the block and how this conforms?
Sure. The the project design as proposed only seeks side setback variations. We are adhering, like I said earlier, to all other zoning code for bulk and massing such as FAR and and building height. On the, we are actually, as far as FAR is concerned, we're actually twelve percent less than what is allowed by zoning code. And as far as building height, we are two foot four feet shorter than what is allowed as of right in an RS two district. Additionally, as in far as in keeping with the neighborhood, it should be noted that the setback reduction we are seeking are more in line with the neighborhood than what the zoning code actually requires. Most of the the side setbacks along that are to our northwest are actually much less. So we'll have, we'll still have more generous side setbacks than what is the predominant character of setbacks along the block. In keeping with the neighborhood additionally, when walking the street and observing the new construction homes along river, there are several. The predominant position of the garage is actually out of the rear yard, much closer to the connection to the street and some even more proud of the building of the home is the garage itself. Lastly, in keeping with the immediate neighbors to the north and south, the proposed garage is adjacent to the garage to the south. Not only is it outside of the rear rear yard, but it faces, but the face of our garage is actually, again, as I previously mentioned, is eighteen feet further back onto the property than our neighbor to the to the south. And the height of the building is in keeping with our neighbor to the direct neighbor to the north. I would say so because of all these reasons, we believe that we tried very hard to match the general character of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wonkel. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions of my own witnesses. We are happy to answer questions from the board.
Any questions from the board at this time? I guess one that, you know, maybe you can answer really quickly is, you know, as we see sometimes, it's a matter of putting too big a house on too small a lot. So I'm wondering if any of the setback shifts that you are applying for, you know, is there room in the house to just reduce the change in setback based on, some of these are fairly small, so could you just, you know, make the kitchen a little bit smaller? I I know you're confined by some existing walls, but it seems that some is a new build out.
So on the north wall, I think as Mr. Wonkel stated, you know, we're only like an inch. And but the reason that we want to stay flush with that wall is that it just is better And, but the reason that we want to stay flush with that wall is that it just is better structurally for the home. Is there a way that they could pull back? You know, half an inch or an inch with the brick or choose sort of a, a material that will be, that will come, you know, back from the, from the existing wall. You know, there may be a way to do that, but it just is not the best condition for that house. When we're only talking about half an inch or an inch. So on the north wall, I don't know that, you know, the best condition is to, is to just be, you know, straightforward and say that there's that half an inch that we, that the existing building sits over that lot line. Or over the required setback line. And so that's why we're requesting that variation. And the same is, is true for the rear. It's not a matter of, you know, trying to make the house bigger with that rear yard. It's just following the existing building in the, in the building wall as it exists and the foundations as they exist. We're not, you know, extending, you know, the first floor out any further into the rear. We're just trying to reuse the space that's existing in the rear and going up for a second story as well. The overall combined, you know, the, the home itself does not require us to seek overall, overall combined setback variation. It's when we attach the garage onto the home that we end up encroaching into that overall combined side yard setback. And so the home itself, we would not need to change the configuration of it, you know, other than this north, I mean, the north and the rear obviously are existing conditions. But the, the reason for the overall combined really is driven by the garage.
And, okay, so the hardship you're describing there is of needing the garage attached for personal reasons of the applicant?
Correct. And I think we're also constrained in the placement of the garage, attach, you know, to try to get it attached to the house. The foundations are where they are, the building walls are where they are. And so we're trying to make it compatible. We're, you know, like, I think Jordan described it well when he said it's like a bookend. We've got, the, the bookend is, one end is the existing foundations. The other end is the required setback. And so we're trying to squeeze that two car garage into the, into those bookends. And we are just not able to get it all in with those bookends.
Okay. Any other questions from the board before we go to the objectors? It sounds like none. So let's move to the objectors. I, I believe we have a Mr. Bettin, a Mr. Dietz, a Ms. Ferrone and a Ms. Frank. So if you are all able to speak, we have no preference on order. I know that you may be sorting that out independently.
Yes, Mr. Dietz will speak first for us.
Great, thank you. Then Mr. Dietz, if you could please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Bill Dietz. My address is twenty-six, twenty-two West Sunnyside in Chicago.
Great. And Mr. Dietz, do you swear or affirm and tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, great. You can carry on. And just as a reminder, you, you can put on your case and also ask questions of the applicant and, and their witnesses.
Okay, thank you. Originally, my objection was really just the fact that it doesn't really fit in the character of the neighborhood. The, the new construction, it's, it's an aesthetic choice. Did they try to make it look like other brick houses in the neighborhood? I, I guess so. But my objection is primarily the rooftop deck on top of the garage that is a completely anomalous feature for the neighborhood. There are only, there's only one other house on the block that has a balcony that's much smaller. That comes off the second floor bedroom. There are a couple of other houses on the east side of Virginia that have porches in their backyards, but those are backyards. They just happen to be exposed because of the placement of the house on a corner of Virginia. So that, that rooftop deck fits more in Wrigleyville than Ravenswood Gardens. And it just is completely out of character with the, the neighborhood. The other big thing that's really out of character is the elimination of the driveway. That the argument that's been made is that there's no alley behind the house, so they need to have a garage pushed up front. Every other house with the exception of the one directly to the south that's built on a non-conforming small lot has a driveway and a garage in the back. This would be the only house on the block with the exception of the neighbor on smaller lot that does not have a driveway leading to a garage in the back of the house. Four other houses on the block have been renovated, expanded, added second floors. They've all managed to keep the driveway and the garage in the back because it is a critical part of the unique character of this block. And so the, the decision to pull the garage to the front, put a rooftop deck on it and eliminate the driveway is absolutely contrary to the character of this block and the neighborhood, regardless of the style of the house. The other thing is that the, the statement that I heard a couple of times is that this would reduce the overall hardscape by eliminating the driveway. I actually don't know that that's true, given that it's a two car garage that's going to have a wider driveway in the front than currently exists, that they're adding fifty percent more square footage with the additions of the garage and the larger kitchen. And they're continuing to keep the the additional variance in the back that encroaches on the open space and adds hardscape. So I, I think if someone did the math of how much driveway is removed versus how much new coverage on the lot is created with this addition, I can imagine that there's really a, a significant amount of reduction in hardscape. And then the other statement about moving the garage to the front and removing it from the back to allow more usable backyard space. I understand that, but it comes at the expense of the neighborhood. They're asking to have private yard space in exchange for eliminating significant airspace, significant light between the houses that's part of the character of the neighborhood so they can hide open space behind more walls. And that's absolutely out of character with the neighborhood. So my objection initially was all about the, out of the, the part of the garage and the placement and the driveway being out of character. Regardless of the style of the house, because that is extremely subjective. And I think as the architect said, in my opinion, it matches. Again, opinion, very subjective. But as I heard more about this and the, the insistence on minimizing the change to the setback to say, we're talking about inches, we're talking about thirty percent, thirty percent reduction in setback on the sides. All of it on the south side where it becomes much closer than would be allowed. The current setback is almost twenty-five feet. Given the driveway, you're talking about reducing it from twenty-five feet to six feet or six and a half feet. Yes, the code only requires, what is it, thirteen feet? But to, it is a massive reduction in existing space between the houses. And then the, the statement I keep hearing about, we're keeping the walls and the walls, the, keeping the foundation creates a hardship. The wall placement is as far to the north on the lot as possible, and this is a sixty-five foot lot. So to say that that encroachment into the setback of the wall that's being retained is creating a hardship, it's hard for me to understand. There is no way that you could place this house anywhere else on the property that would allow for more width than where it is now. So that seems like a hardship that's created by the design, not by the lot itself and not by any constraints within the, the code or neighborhood.
And Mr. Dietz, one quick question, just as I'm trying to picture, obviously, we're not standing in front of the property. Is it typical on this block for, like, if I'm standing on the street, if, is there airspace where I can actually see to the river?
You can see to the river with some of the houses. You can see to the back of the garage. And with the placement of the garage of some of the houses, you can see to the river. In this particular instance, you can see to the river. There's a fence and the garage blocks most of it, but there is airspace through to the river. And in a couple other houses to the north, you can see through to the river. I, I also think the statement that other houses have pulled the garage to the front and that's more in keeping with the contemporary design is a misstatement. There is no house on the block where the garage has been pulled up to the front. There are three houses on the block to the north that have done that. But had that been on this block or had the neighbors been more aware? I imagine that would have been objected to as well. And then the other question I had for the, for whoever is what constitutes keeping the original foundation and because less than, or I would, I think the estimate from looking at the plan was that the new foundation will incorporate, will include only fifty percent of the original house or be, so the original, original foundation will make up only fifty percent of the new, new house. So keeping the original foundation and calling it keeping the original foundation when in fact it makes up fifty percent of the new foundation seems wrong to me. And when you look at the design, there, they say they're keeping the front foundation or the front, they're tearing off a bay, a bay window and flattening it. And if you look at the amount of foundation or wall that's kept, it's a couple of feet on each side with new windows. Same with the back, they're tearing off the back and they're keeping just a couple of walls, a couple of feet on each side of some new doors that are being added. So really, it's just the north side wall and probably the poured foundation that's being kept. And so it seems like to me that's a hardship that's a chosen hardship as opposed to a constraint of the lot. And I don't know the codes and to know what, how that gets interpreted. So that's more of a question to people.
I'll speak. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
And then I guess just one other, other thing that no, never mind.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wonkel. If you, if you had an answer.
Yeah, I was just going to say a little bit about the foundations and footings. The intention is to underpin the existing footings and foundations to reinforce and to, to dig a slightly deeper basement. And the, the front wall specifically, it being curved would be more expensive to have to deal with from a construction standpoint. And the, the, the nature at which the percentage is either there or not there, I think is a little misleading because of the windows that are, that are dashed out. I don't know if you're looking at the demolition plan specifically, but the major expense is moving or removing and having to rebuild the wall in general. So while there is a, a fair portion being removed, that will be a budget saving venture, just the fact that we're keeping any of it. But we try to keep as much of it as possible, especially as the defined perimeter or outline of the existing home and foundation.
But, okay, so if I understand what you just said, you're also going to dig out the existing floor and pour a new sub or new foundation, new floor in the basement? So you're keeping some of the walls, but you're digging out underneath them?
No, no, the foundation is staying where it is. We are, the concrete slab is currently in a pretty bad shape. It's not flat. And there has been some water issues over the years. So we are essentially starting fresh from, especially like the inside of, of the floor.
Yeah, but you said you were going to increase the ceiling height, so it sounds like you're going to lower that floor.
It will be lower. Yes.
Okay. Okay. So and let me just add, I know I'm taking up a lot of time, but, and I'm the one who's short on time here. But I want to add one other thing. The, the statement that I think Kate Duncan made was that this is not a historic house and that this doesn't meet any criteria for historic house. And while that's true, from a city perspective, it is considered by Ravenswood Gardens Homeowners Association, a historic house. Any house that's of this house's age is by the homeowners association designated as a historic house. And that, that doesn't, is not city ordinance. That's not something that gives it special protection. But it is something that the neighborhood association has collectively agreed is important. So, sorry, I, I guess I'm done.
No, that's okay. So, Mr. Dietz, did you say, are you short on time to the extent that you have to leave soon? Because if so, I'll open up for you individually questions from, from the applicant, kind of a rebuttal previous to the rest of the rebuttal, only if you need to leave.
Yeah, I have about ten to fifteen minutes before I have to leave. So if Felicia and Louise and Michael want to talk first, I, and I can, I can handle that.
Okay, I'll, I'll put that, I'll put that up to you. They're going to get a chance to speak either way. But if, if you want to open yourself up to any questions.
Sure, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Counselor Duncan, if you have any questions for Mr. Dietz, this would be the time.
No, I don't have any questions for Mr. Dietz. I may have rebuttal after everyone has spoken, but I don't have any questions right now.
Okay. Yep. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dietz. And with that, we can hand it off to another objector, whoever's next in line.
That will be Louise Frank.
Hi, I don't know if you can see me or hear me.
We can hear you, Ms. Frank. So could you please?
Excellent.
Give your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. I'm Louise Frank. I live at four five one nine North Virginia Avenue in nineteen sixteen Prairie Style Bungalow directly across the street from four five two oh, North Virginia.
Great. And really quick, do you swear and affirm and tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, you can carry on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you very much for listening to us today and for having us here. Happy Mother's Birthday. And although we are here to object or at least to raise some concerns about the project across the street, we all are greatly looking forward to welcoming the Bercegas into a very, very special corner of Chicago, which is unlike pretty much any place else I've ever seen. And I've lived in Chicago my entire life. And I do know that Julia reached out to want to meet with me this week. However, I, I was not available by the time she reached out to me Tuesday evening before today. I, I just, I couldn't do it. I would have loved to meet with her. I look forward to meeting her in the future and to being a good neighbor. That said, some of my concerns concern the historical makeup of our neighborhood and that this is a nineteen twenty-one, more or less bungalow that really adds to the character of our neighborhood. I'm wondering if I'm sorry, I'm not being as articulate as Bill was. In the back, are there any plans to protect or enhance the riverbank in the back of the house? Will there be landscaping back there that will enhance the protection of that area once they move if they, the, the garage? Also, this is, one of the things that makes this neighborhood what it is are the tree lined streets. And I know they're going to be removing at least one tree that is eighty or a hundred years old, a horse chestnut that is right smack dab in the middle of where their garage will be going. And I'm not sure about, I think it's a maple tree that's in front of the front window. I don't know if that tree is going to stay or also get taken down. And what plans there are, if any, to enhance the landscaping around there. I, I myself have planted four or five trees on my parkways just to make sure we stay in a place that has tree lined streets. And that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, there are some other things, but like I said, those are more concerns and questions. So that's that for me. Thank you.
Great, yeah. And so Counselor Duncan, you can go ahead or your witnesses and respond to Mr. Great. Yeah. And so Counselor Duncan, you can go ahead or your witnesses and respond to Ms. Frank's questions.
So again, I'll hold my rebuttal for the end. Jordan, will you talk about, are you going to be meeting the landscape ordinance? And what type of landscape you will be doing? Will you be meeting the Chicago Landscape Ordinance when you landscapes the home?
Yeah, as far as the street scape, yes, we have not been working with the Berseyagas yet regarding the, the riverbank. I know there will be some work as far as access. And I know Julia and Robert are, you know, they obviously want to enjoy their portion of the river. And part of that will be to, to enhance embellish. It's, it's full of brush right now. It'll be cleaned so that there's a view towards the river. And it will be, again, we haven't been prompted to start that conversation. A landscape architect may be involved at some point, but at this point, we will adhere to landscape ordinance for that, at least the street scape that we know that this far.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Frank, unless you had anything else, we can go to the next objector.
No, other than on a personal note, congratulations, Julia. Stay safe and healthy. So your whole family can join us when you guys move in.
Thank you, Louise. I look forward to meeting you in person.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Michael then.
Great. Okay, Michael, Mr. Batten, sorry if I'm saying your last name wrong, but are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah. So can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Michael Batten, forty-five thirty North Virginia Avenue.
Great. And do you swear to tell, swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll just start by, you know, thanking the board for their time. It seems like these meetings run very, very long. So I'll try to keep this brief. I did submit on Monday, a letter to the ZBA. I hope that the board has had a chance to review it and read it. That contains in detail a lot of our objections to this project. After submitting that letter on Monday, I was able to obtain the findings of fact through a request to the staff of the ZBA. And appreciate that they promptly provided that to me. So with that finding of fact, I actually have some additional testimony to provide. As long as, and I'll stick to the additional testimony, as long as the letter will be hopefully reviewed by the ZBA board.
Yeah, Mr. Batten, so if you could quickly summarize for the board, the letter, we've seen it, but there's a lot of updates within the last few days on a lot of matters. So it would just be helpful if you, you quickly noted the contents of that letter.
Yes, there's, there's a lot in there and some of which has already been mentioned, but you know, primarily this project will have a significant impact on the light and air in our home. I understand that there's testimony contrary to that, but I don't know how anyone would be other than us able to give testimony like that, given that we live in this home and know exactly the type of impact that it'll have. Particularly the relief on the rear setback, understanding that the existing home encroaches seven feet back into the setback requirement. That in and of itself, if it were not to change, would not impact our light, but certainly adding a second floor on top of that seven feet that encroaches into the setback has a serious impact on the amount of light and air that we get in our home. This wall of our house is our south facing wall. And as you know, light in Chicago is, is, is a rare, is a rare thing from time to time. And we enjoy a lot of that that's able to come in. I think that there is no way that anyone could say that it will not have an impact. In addition to that, the existing home has a, off of the, the rear has a patio. What is proposed here is a deck. I understand that's not taken into consideration with regard to setbacks, but it will have a significant impact on, on again, our, our, our light and air and also privacy. That deck will be elevated above the backyard and extend even further back than the seven feet. Probably, I think it's a 10 foot deck, so 17 feet into the setback elevated over the yard will have a big impact on our house. I think that the, and I think I put this in the letter as well, but the over 30% ask on the minimum combined side setback. We're not talking about inches. Again, we're talking about several feet. We're talking about six or seven feet, just like the back. All for reasonable variance here. You know, my wife and my kids and I live in the city and we've lived here for eight years and we've lived in the neighborhood for 14 years. And we are all about finding creative ways for families to take homes that are 100 years old on lots that were platted 100 years ago and, and, and figure out a way where, you know, we can, you know, live like a modern family wants to live. That said, I think what's being asked here is, is, is overreaching when you look at these percentages and setbacks that seem to be designed to create a 4,000 square foot home. There's nothing against that. It's, 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 you know, that is a, it's a large home for the neighborhood. It is within the requirements. But I think what you're finding here is that most of what's being asked and claimed as a hardship is really just justification to get everything that, that the applicant wants and, and, and don't begrudge them for asking. But I think the impacts on the neighboring properties and ours in particular are being ignored. So I think that pretty much the, the, the gist of the letter, again, I asked that hopefully that could just be reviewed before this matter is, is adjudicated. But I want to just address a couple of quick things and that were not in the letter. And that is that if we could put up the aerial of the block, I don't know if it's, it's possible to do that. I think it was the first thing shown on this stretch of Virginia. But there are exactly 12 homes on Virginia Avenue, south of Wilson, north of Sunnyside, north of Sunken Gardens Park. All of them, with one lone exception, have garages in the rear of the home. Forty-five twenty North Virginia, the house in question is one of them. It's one of the 12. The, the two car garage sits in the back. Several of these homes, including our neighbor to the north, have been extensively renovated, added second floors in a tasteful way, and all of those have the same condition of having a rear garage that remains. In fact, there's another home right now undergoing a major restoration and renovation on the block. And again, that condition will remain with the garage in the back. I don't think there's any hardship here due to a lack of an alley. I think it's actually a positive being on the river. In fact, the only hardship is that you have to take your, your, your garbage and recycling to the curb, but the kid next door will do that for a dollar a week. So it's, it's actually not quite a hardship. The configuration continues to work for all the homes in the immediate area. Further, the home in question here is on a 65 foot lot, 65 feet of frontage. That is the widest lot on the block of the 12 homes by approximately 10 feet. Actually, I think it is exactly 10 feet. Ours is the next widest. It's 55 feet. So to claim a hardship when everyone else has figured out a way to live with this just seems like an, an absolute stretch. The only home that has a front facing, street facing garage is the home to the south. And as mentioned before, I think that lot, it, it's definitely a non-conforming lot. It's an odd shape. It's a, it's not a rectangular lot. I think it's, Felicia can speak to this. It's 53 feet in the front and 27 in the back. With 27 in the back, you have to put the garage in the front. That's, that's the only option. And that's the way it is, the way it is. Secondly, in the findings of fact, the architect talks a lot about the walls. We've touched on this already. It doesn't make sense, the overall, if you look at the overall project, the east facing wall is being and foundation is being completely demolished to add the garage and in addition. You can clearly see, if you look at the plans, that garage being proposed could be pushed back where the addition to the existing structure is and still be attached and be further pushed away from the, the home to the south. So there are ways that this could happen. It's just that you might have to sacrifice square footage. And in fact, you probably incur less cost. Also, as mentioned, the curved linear wall, brick wall in the front is being removed, the angled brick columns. All these other unique features are being removed. I guess this is a matter of taste. That's fine, but it definitely costs money to do that versus keep the existing. And then I guess with regard to the north wall, my issue is not a matter of, of, you know, an inch or half inch or whatever that is, that I have no objection to that wall remaining where it is. I have no objection to a second floor being added above that wall. Again, I totally reasonable understand how, you know, people want to be able to live here in the city. But if you look at the project in totality, what's happening here is that the only wall substantially being kept are the walls that are actually in the setback that are, that are encroaching. And the other ones are being essentially removed completely. And even those walls, I think as Bill pointed out, the north wall and the, and the, and the rear wall, the west wall are, are being so substantially modified with when existing window openings blocked up and new window openings cut in, that you might as well actually take down the whole wall. So, you know, what I would suggest here though, is that all of this is being done to maintain what are encroachments and not as a result of a hardship, a hardship. As far as conforming to the neighborhood, again, matter of taste, I would, I would disagree. I think a home of this design and size is not the norm for, for the neighborhood. Or does it reflect the character of the surrounding neighborhood? South of Wilson on Virginia Avenue, west of Rockwell on Windsor and west of Rockwell on Sunnyside, there are 46 homes. It comprise the immediate neighborhood. There is not one single home in this area that has a street facing two car garage, not one. There are also no homes with a rooftop deck over a street facing garage. I think these, these elements are clear out of character and have a meaningful impact on the street scape of the neighborhood. And just to close, you know, what I've said today is in addition to my objections filed in the letter, we have several adverse impacts to light and air surrounding our home from what is being proposed. I asked the board to kindly consider these impacts and the way we live and enjoy our home. We've made these objections respectfully and kindly. Unfortunately, our concerns that were voiced months ago when we first met the applicants and again in our objection letter, as well as follow up emails, the applicants have resulted in no changes to the plans. They would assuage our concerns in any way. Our requests and suggestions thus far have only been met with more reasons why the applicant should be entitled to relief from the zoning codes. We ask for only reasonableness from the applicant. We are in favor of finding creative ways to make these lots and homes usable for today's family. Unfortunately, this always seems to come with compromises, either with oneself, on what they can have and not have, and, and/or their neighbors. When the Berseyagas do move into their new home, we will welcome them no matter the outcome. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Batten. And I mean, to, to that note, it is always a better process for us when there's been, you know, lengthy discussions that may lead to compromise because it's not necessarily our best role to play mediator. But we will see where these conversations go as we finish up the objectors. And I just ask for reasons of expediency that, that we don't get repetitive. So that then we can move to rebuttal and kind of have the conversation. So I believe that there's one final objector.
Yes, and that's, that would be me, Felicia Ferrone.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrone. And will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Felicia Ferrone. I'm the homeowner of the house adjacent to the south at forty-five sixteen North Virginia.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. You can go right ahead.
Okay. Um, thank you for this time. Julia, Chris is here with me and we're super excited for you and Robert. Congratulations. And I do want to open by saying we are very much looking forward to you being our neighbors. And we of course do have some concerns as we feel like your home is going to severely impact the neighborhood, but most personally, it's going to severely negatively impact our home. So I just want to say how I appreciate this process, which is fair and genuine and allowing the neighbors to have a voice about the fabric of our neighborhood. I'm going to speak to that as well as the impact it has on us directly. So I, to try not to repeat what's already been said, I think this question of essential character of the neighborhood is an important one. And while in many parts of the city, it would be hard, one would be hard pressed to define what the essential characteristic of the neighborhood is. In ours, it's quite unique because the homes are quite homogeneous. As Michael pointed out, all the homes have a rear setback garage, with the exception of ours, which is on a triangular lot and was built in 1964. The, all of the homes are also quite original to how they were built 190, 80 years ago, where they have been perhaps renovated, but the essential character of the original bungalow was maintained. The fabric of the neighborhood is one that is manifested by the desire to live in the city and not to build a suburban like home in the city. I think this proposal of this home with a two car garage front facing is more suited for the essential characteristics of a neighborhood of the suburbs and not Ravenswood Gardens. None of the homes, as we've stressed as neighbors, have a, have a front loaded mass with a two car garage and roof deck. And again, that sort of configuration would be much more appropriate for the suburbs, I feel. I'd like to kind of briefly address the hardships that are mentioned in the application, which I strongly disagree with. All the garages are in the back of the house, with the exception of ours, as we mentioned. Regarding the question of hardscape, there are many, many other ways to deal with stormwater and erosion that do not require a two car front facing garage in the front of the house. The, in fact, there is a historic home, probably the dates about the same as the bungalow in question. Just down the block, probably five houses or so to the north that just recently built a rear garage, the driveway that accesses the garage in the back of the property. The I want to address the third issue. I understand the hardship of a, an elderly parent who is compromised. My mother also walks with a walker and has extreme limited mobility. I appreciate the, I appreciate that she would be coming to live with them and she would also be our neighbor. I question and challenge the logic of the garage must be attached in order to accommodate the mother, given that there are only stairs that access the ground floor. I also challenge, while this is not part of the variance, I challenge the logic of the garage needing to be attached in that the mother will be wheelchair bound in the in-law suite when the bathroom attached to her in-law suite is not ADA compliant with a five foot turning radius. It's quite a small bathroom and she would need complete assistance in and out of the bathroom for the plan as I, as I read it. Um, I'd like to speak now as actually the homeowner of the adjacent property at forty-five sixteen. So about a year and a half ago, we bought this modest 1964, two bedroom, one bath house. We fell in love with it because it is a truly rare honor that it sits along the river and that we are able to see the sky from every room in the house. The house is constantly filled with light. My partner and I are both designers. My background is actually in architecture. And so these characteristics and quality of design are fundamental to both of us. We wake up, the, I do want to say the north facing elevation, obviously our house was built many decades after the bungalow. The house was clearly designed, keeping in mind context, which again, architects should be required to consider. And we only have, we have a bathroom. should be required to consider. And we only have, we have a bathroom. As I said, it's a one bathroom house. The bathroom has a single window facing the, on the north facade and our, the bedroom has a, a pair of windows, uh, facing the north, but because of the way the bungalow is designed, it allows to maximize northern facing light. And, uh, the beautiful chestnut tree as well, uh, which predated our house. So every morning we wake up to the wonderful morning north face light. The variance being requested means that we would wake up to a brick wall of a two car garage with a roof deck. Due to its location, height and setback request they are asking for, we would no longer be able to see the sky at all. Our bedroom would be forever dark. The proposed two car garage will block all light into our bedroom. And the roof deck above it will look directly into our bedroom, removing all privacy. Their site plan, which is actually currently, um, up on the screen now. If you look in and pull out your magnifying glass, you will see that the dash line running vertically on the paper indicates, the site plan indicates the city required setback is thirteen feet and I can't read the small numbers. Their variance is asking for six. Our issue is not with the six foot setback or six foot and change, but it's about the impact, the dramatically, the dramatic and negative impact, the combined setback will have on us specifically as the homeowners. This variation of the front loaded two car garage with a six foot setback will forever take away the light and air of our bedroom of our two bedroom house. I would like to add that we only have the one set of windows on the entire north face. With the exception of the bathroom, which is bathroom window, which is obviously not an issue in our case for privacy reasons. I argue that the architects didn't take into consideration the, the context and the fact that the entire north face is a solid brick wall less this bedroom set of windows. And they positioned the garage right there, removing all of our light and air. So I guess I'm left, it's a rhetorical question. But I guess I just ask how with a sixty five foot wide lot, how could a design not be managed to respect the required setbacks and not impede on the adjacent neighbors' light and air? The issue is with the combined setbacks. And we think it's wonderful that they wanna live near their father-in-law and that they should have the home of their wishes. That fits their needs and the needs of the neighborhood. We fully support that. We all want that. Everyone in this neighborhood, when we moved in a year and a half ago, we realized it's this total Shangri-La where people stay for lifetimes and generations because of the uniqueness. And so we want that for them as we want it for us. And we imagine that they have spent and invested a tremendous amount of time and money into this project and designing this home. We don't, you know, we don't wanna set them back. But we don't feel that the design meets the criteria to allow for the variance. Given the negative impact it'll have on the neighborhood and specifically on the adjacent homes to the north and, um, I would argue, argue dramatically to the south. So I think in the end, my, my question is, you know, what Chicago do we wanna live in? Do we wanna live in a Chicago? Where you can get what you want with the best lawyers you can pay for, with the best connections and just hammer something into place? And, uh, feel entitled to variances? Or is it a Chicago that upholds the true urban fabric of a neighborhood that respects the context? The surrounding context setbacks codes that are all established within a sense of reason and methodology to protect what is the true unique character of our neighborhood. So with that, I conclude my statements and again, um, wholeheartedly, Chris and I both welcome warmly Julia and Robert to our area and be our neighbors. It's just coming at such an extreme cost for our two bedroom house and the fact that we will lose all light and access to the sky. Unless we have our nose pressed up to the window because of their project. So with that, I conclude. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bronay. Um, so now, um, I think before I open up for what I expect will be a good amount of questions from the board. Counselor Duncan, if you wanted to, um, any rebuttal at this point, and of course you'll have a time for a closing statement at the end, but this, this is rebuttal.
So I just want to say, you know, Mr. Chairman and members of the ZBA, we believe that we have demonstrated that we meet all the criteria necessary to grant the variations requested. We've set forth our hardship for the north side yard variation. We've set forth our hardship for the rear yard variation. We've set forth our hardship for the overall combined setback variation. You know, both Julia and Jordan have testified here, um, related to all of those criteria and why we believe we beat the, the criteria that are required to grant the variations. We also think we fit within the character of this neighborhood. Our expert architect has examined the neighborhood and has examined the conditions of the homes in the neighborhood. And we believe that we are well within the context of other homes within the neighborhood. And so, um, with that, I, I think we are open to answering questions from the board and, um, I may have more to say at the end, but for now, I think we'll just, we'll be happy to answer your questions.
Great. Yeah, I'm actually gonna open it up to other, other board members first. I'll have a few, but, um, we'll see if, uh, they get covered. So any questions from the board?
I, I've, I've got a question, um, this Commissioner Sanchez. Ms. Duncan, on the, uh, on the issue of the garage, can you talk more about exactly what the hardship is to the property? For the, for, uh,
So, yes, thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. So the, the hardship for the garage starts with the fact that there's no alley at the rear. It's only the Chicago River. Typical lots in Chicago are based on, um, having an alley at the rear to access your parking. And in this case, while it's a wonderful amenity, it, it just is not how a typical lot is situated for purposes of applying the zoning code. And so in this case, we have to come from the front of the home, uh, down the, down the property line in order to have access to the driveway. So that's the first thing that sort of gives us a little hiccup about where to put the garage. And, um, in this case, because we're abutting the Chicago River, we want to minimize the impacts to the river and minimize any runoff that we would have. And so we have, we, we think the shorter driveway is better for stormwater runoff and for the conditions of the lot and, and its proximity to the river. So we also have a condition and I may let Jordan come on and talk about this a little bit more. But the way, I think he talked a little bit again about this bookend concept that we have, um, the, the existing foundations to which we are going to abut the garage and then this overall combined setback that's required. And also a south side yard setback, which I wanna just point out again, we are meeting. We are meeting with the, the terms of the zoning code for that, for that south side yard setback, which is adjacent to Mrs. Ferroni's house. But Jordan, will you talk a little bit more about the placement of the garage and the constraints of the actual property? As Commissioner Sanchez has asked?
Yeah, I think, I think you covered the, the majority of it and the, it's the, it's the perimeter of the, the foundation, I think is is the biggest reason for, um, having to kind of squeeze it in this spot. That in combined with, you know, the desire to be attached. Um, and also the garage right now is, uh, a minimum width that would allow per RS two, two onsite parking spaces are required. So if you take the eight by eighteen, uh, required area for a single car with navigation space, and again, a wheelchair may come into picture at some point. We are at, as, as we've squeezed it down, uh, as much as possible, we think can still make for a functioning, uh, two car garage. I don't know if you wanna have any other?
No, thanks, Jordan.
Thanks for, uh, those answers. I, I do have another question about, um, the character of the neighborhood. There was a lot of testimony, um, from the witnesses about how this garage would not be in conformance with the character of the neighborhood because it would have a roof, uh, deck on top of it. And I, if I'm, I, I think what they said was that there, that would be the only garage that would have a roof deck. So it would not be in conformance with the character of the neighborhood. Well, how do you respond to that?
So I think there are other garages in the neighborhood that are set forth as ours, including our neighborhood directly to the south. Our garage setback a little bit further than hers. And I understand that, you know, she's got a different site and a different house. But she does have a garage that's not, you know, in the rear along the river with a long driveway from the front of the property boundary all the way down. The garage roof deck, I, Jordan, do you know if there are any other garage roof decks in the neighborhood that I'm not sure about?
Yeah, not to my knowledge, but what I will say, and this goes back to the first, um, comments we heard regarding, uh, the roof deck versus, you know, a traditional sloped roof. We tried to approach it rather than the idea of a suburban garage was, was also kind of brought up. We felt that if we were to put a, a hip roof, asphalt shingles, uh, there at the front, it would feel much more suburban than if we broke it up. We, we haven't talked, you know, a lot, but there will be a lot of, actually on the, on the site plan, you can see we intend to soften up that front edge with, with landscaping. There's gonna be, it's gonna be soft. So the idea was if you were standing across the street looking at it, the view towards the river would be softer with more vegetation than if it was just a, a blah three twelve, you know, slopes. Hip roof. So that was, that was kind of the idea. To kind of eliminate or alleviate this notion of if you bring a garage to the, to the street, then it automatically, it's a suburban gesture.
I guess I actually, to follow up on, um, that question, I actually would like to, and this is just a pure hypothetical. But I'd like to hear from, um, one of the objectors, maybe Ms. Ferrone, um, since her, um, her home is adjacent. On whether there's an attached garage with a roof deck or whether there's an attached garage with no roof deck makes a difference to her in her situation and the character of the neighborhood. I'd like to hear about, uh, generally how the roof deck plays into, um, their perspective on the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Um, I'm happy to answer that. The, um, roof decks over garages are very grown from Chicago, are very wiggly field, wiggly bill, wiggly bill. Or they happen on alleys. Garages over, garages on alleys have roof decks, very often on standard twenty five foot lots where the backyard is, is limited. The garage, the two car garage to the front would be unique entirely to this area. And the roof deck on it adds to a further exemption and, uh, anomaly in the area. I believe that given the height of the garage and what they're asking for as the six foot offset from or setback, um, for our bedroom will completely diminish all light and we will not be able to see the sky from that room. And that then will lower the interest in our house, even though this is meant to be our house forever. No one wants a two bedroom house with one bedroom that is diminished in terms of staring at a brick wall. And so these are the hardships we're facing and this front facing two car garage anomaly is, is, is sort of wreaking havoc in multiple ways. One, it's creating a new precedent for the neighborhood, which is very suburban. And the roof deck above is a further exception, um, and precedent that they would be setting in the neighborhood. And as you've heard from all of our neighbors who are objecting, we believe, while we believe in improvement and modernizing these homes, we believe in maintaining a certain fabric of the neighborhood, which is designed by the architectural, respecting the architectural heritage and the setbacks which allow for a lot of uh, air and light between the homes. And so that's how I would address, that's how I would like to speak to this anomaly of the front facing two car garage with roof deck.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, I just want to address and, and with all due respect to Mrs. Ferroni, we are meeting the required minimum setback on the south side of the building. So we are compliant with the zoning code on that side of the building. I understand that we have an overall combined setback problem on this lot, but if we were to tear down and build from scratch, we, in, in, we wanted to heavily weight the building on the south side of the lot. We would be able to situate it at that six and a half feet. And so I just wanna make sure that that's clear, that we are, we have, we are trying to provide an adequate supply of light and air as is defined in the zoning code by meeting that required minimum setback on the south side.
And I appreciate that, but I guess I, I question then, at what point does the question of combined setback come into play?
This is a tricky case. I think it's unusual that you can meet the, the required rear on both sides of the building and not meet the overall combined. I think the, the code typically and technically is meant to have the required rear, the required side on both sides add up to the minimum overall. In this case, it does not.
I, I would, yeah, I would also say that, uh, per our conversations and my understanding of the code is the twenty five foot wide lot in Chicago is, uh, by all means, the predominant, uh, width and where, when you have that width, these minimums and overall make sense. But as you, as I've been saying, this lot is unique and because of the width, the overall is a, it's a big number. And so to that said, I, and again, um, the minimum, um, the distance between what would be, you know, your home and the, the side of the garage is far greater than I'm assuming, I mean, ninety percent of the homes on this block, it's, it's still more than.
That, that's not true.
And I would also add that the combined, the whole point of the way the code is laid out is to maintain a certain proportion of built mass to the lot. And, um, they, they are specifically written so that you don't build too large of a house and, and jam it in there in a way that you're meeting these minimums, yet you're destroying the fabric of the neighborhood.
And the minimums, the minimums naturally grow as the lot size gets larger.
Please identify yourself as you speak. Um, we've gotta get everything on the record.
Okay, it's Michael, Michael Baden. Again, I would just say that the, the minimums grow as the lights, as the lot sizes get larger for, for, for obvious and apparent reasons. And it is, it is, it's, it's unbelievable that we be talking about a sixty five foot lot, which is over two times the standard lot cited by the architect, being a hardship.
But I wanna just focus, uh, again, bring the, the commission's attention back to the fact that we're trying to build on existing building lines and existing building walls. And so that is, that is, those are hardships that are, that are not created. Julia and Robert did not create those hardships. They've got a budget that they're trying to work within. They're trying to build a house for their family to live in with immediate family in the actual neighborhood up a block. Um, these are not situations that they created. They're trying to build a house within the best they can within the constraints of the zoning code.
But this is Michael Baden again, but that's also refutable because they're building in addition to the house as well as a garage and the garage could go where the addition is slated to go, which would actually push it further back, alleviate Felicia's concern about it being which would actually push it further back, alleviate Felicia's concern about it being adjacent to her windows. So these are just choices. These are, these are not, these are, these are actually not hardships. These are choices.
Jordan, can you speak a little bit more about the, the choices that have been made here in the addition? And the fact that the existing home, that the home itself is actually compliant with the overall combined setback? We could take this garage off, I guess we could detach the garage and put it in the rear yard, which is not a better condition for anyone involved, including the neighbors, we don't believe, because it will be an obstruction in the rear yard then, as opposed to where we've situated it. But Jordan, can you talk a little bit more about that, please?
Yes, the, the garage, the existing, well, where it is off, the, the home itself, we are several feet. I'm, I'm looking at the drawing probably roughly six feet off of the required side setback of the, of the home addition. And again, we, we tried to make a balance between where the garage was towards the front versus towards the rear in order to, you know, maximize light and to create the condition of the garage being as close to the in-law suite as possible. And that's kind of where the balance was struck. I will say to your point about what's allowed by code is a garage potentially, if it was new construction, which I, I would, I don't want to presume would be, would be the case, but the, the new garage could be twice the size of the existing garage by code, and it could touch the south, south, the south property line. Again, per code, the side setbacks do not apply to the rear yard.
This is Felicia Ferrone. I wanted to add that currently the garage is in the back as are all the other houses on, on the street, as Michael pointed out. The garage in its current location does not take away our light. The proposed garage, which is supposedly located up front to be close to in-law suite, even though the home is not ADA compliant, as I read the plans, actually diminishes all light and access to the sky from our one of two bedrooms.
You are not entitled to, you are not entitled to open access to the sky. You are entitled to inadequate supply of light and air. And we believe that meeting the setback requirement, the minimum setback requirement on that side allows you an adequate supply of light and air in accordance with the Chicago zoning ordinance.
Okay, so I just want to, I, hold on. This is, this is Commissioner Keats. And I just want to level set a bit because I think we do understand the arguments on both sides related to essential character of the community, light and air. You know, we've seen these before. I just have two direct questions for the applicant or the applicant's attorney. Wondering kind of what went into their consideration as they were planning. The first is, as you've described, one of the hardships related to the garage is direct access into the home for easier access for the, the in-law suite. Did you consider a one car garage that would assumingly be shorter width? And my second question is, I, I want you to talk about the roof deck and kind of explain there what you think the benefit is and if there's any related hardship to not having that.
Okay, so there was consideration of a one car garage for this home. We have had discussions about that, but a standard garage for a property such as this and in the neighborhood is a two car garage. And so I think there's a reasonable expectation that a two car garage is a standard feature for a home of this nature. And
Would you admit on that point, though, that the garage setup in this neighborhood is a little, that you're proposing is a little bit different than the rest of the neighborhood? So maybe it would make sense to alter it a little bit since it's really not in compliance with what we see in the rest of the neighborhood?
I disagree with that characterization of the neighborhood. Right next door to us, there is a garage that is abutting the street. There are other garages down the block and onto the 4600 block of North Virginia, where they're in the, in the front of the, of the yard. There are some that are actually underneath the building and the building pops up on top of them in the 4600 block of North Virginia. Virginia is a two, is a two block street. So there's the 4500 block and the 4600 block. And the 4600 block has many examples of garages that are in the front and underneath the structure. So Jordan, maybe you can talk a little bit more about that if you could, please?
Sure. We, you know, we use those, I guess when we talk about the neighborhood, we can, we can talk about 4600. And so that was kind of our, you know, base to go on is, you know, these, these homes on the 4600 block, it's, it's a similar story. And all these homes have similar boundaries and, and rules that they're, and they're kind of confined and working within. And so the thought was if, if new families are doing new work, the, the predominant, you know, contemporary gesture is to bring the garage forward if allowed. And we, we saw that as a fair enough precedent to kind of follow suit and to provide Robert and Julia with some of the things that they were asking for.
This is Commissioner Esposito. Is the 4600 block of North Virginia contiguous to the 4500 block of North Virginia?
This is, this is, sorry, this is Michael Batten, if I could just speak to that.
Hold on, Mr. Batten, this is our case in chief. So I believe, Mr. Chairman, we should have a chance to address that question.
They get, they get first response here and we can go back to you.
So, Jordan, again, I'd ask you to answer that question.
Yes, there's, Wilson is the street that separates. There's a, I believe a two-way stop at that intersection.
Are they connected? Or is the, is there a cul-de-sac condition of some sort?
There, I think there's just, just the intersection of Wilson. I don't know if you don't have an image of that, but
Julia, do you, Julia, do you know if there is a cul-de-sac condition at the end of your block that would separate you from Wilson?
There is at the end of the 4500 block.
Okay. And is, is the 4600 block similar to that? Does that also have a cul-de-sac condition?
The 4600 block ends at the train, so it's a dead end.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Batten, I will say, if you had anything to add, that
Okay, just, just quickly, yes, there's a cul-de-sac in the block. There are two distinct different blocks. And the other thing I would add to the previous discussion is that Mrs. Frank's house, Mr. Deet's house, the house north of me, and then the Ferrone house, as well as the two houses I can see beyond Felicia's house on the park, all have single car garages. It's, it's not a, two car garage is not a standard whatsoever.
Okay, Councilor Duncan, you can either add to that or go to my second question related to reasoning for the roof deck and any related hardship of not having that.
Julia, I'm going to ask you to speak about the rooftop deck and your, the, the reason that you wanted to add the rooftop deck on the garage, please?
Yeah, I think Jordan kind of spoke to it earlier, but the architects pointed out to us that maybe having a rooftop deck above the garage would kind of soften the garage. Instead of it being this massive structure, we could put some vegetation on top of the garage and around it so that it wouldn't be like this massive structure on the street. So that was kind of the thinking.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any other questions as we go through this? Sounds like none. We've gotten a lot of testimony. I appreciate everyone's time. Anything else to add?
No, Mr. Chairman, again, I thank everyone for their time. I even thank the objectors for coming and being, you know, concerned about their neighborhood and being supportive of Robert and Julia regardless of what happens. Because I, I know that they're excited to move into your neighborhood and be neighbors, be your neighbors as well. And we've talked a lot about that. So thanks to everyone involved. I, I'll, I'll end by saying we do believe that we meet all the criteria required for the granting of these variations. And thank you very much for everyone's time.
Okay, thank you very much. We will take this under consideration. So I'm going to call a, a quick 10 minute recess, not yet our typical lunch one. And that will bring us back at, let's say, let's say 12:30, so a little bit more than 10 minutes. My motion for such recess, Commissioner Toya second, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Right, we're going to reconvene at 12:30. See you all then. Thank you.
Brief intro and then we can swear in the witnesses if it's okay. Again, good afternoon Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Nick Fatikas. I'm one of the attorneys at the Law Offices of San Banks at 221 North LaSalle Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant in this case, Mr. Jorge Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez is the individual beneficiary of the land trust that holds title to the subject property at 2647 West 23rd Place. Today, the property is vacant and unimproved. The applicant is proposing to develop the lot with a two-story, three-unit residential building. On-site surface parking for three cars will be provided at the rear of the lot. The issue is that the subject lot is slightly substandard. It measures 24 feet wide by 124.1 feet deep. And although it's only a foot narrower and less than a foot shorter than a standard city lot, the total lot area is 21.6 square feet short of the minimum lot area requirement for three residential units. Additionally, and this is shown on the survey that we submitted with our findings of fact, Mr. Chairman, the neighboring garage structure at 2649 West 23rd Place encroaches about five inches onto our lot. And because our lot is only 24 feet wide, that five-inch encroachment prevents us from providing three eight-foot-wide, otherwise code-compliant parking spaces. So in order to permit our project, the applicant is seeking a variation to reduce the minimum lot area requirement for three units from 3,000 square feet to 2,978.4 square feet, and also to reduce the technical off-street parking requirement from three parking spaces to two parking spaces. I have, again, two witnesses testifying today on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Jorge Sanchez, and our project architect, Mr. Peter Sternyak. And Chair, if you want to swear in our witnesses, I could then call them for testimony.
Okay, great. Mr. Sanchez, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Jorge Sanchez. I reside at 1700 South Desplanes, Chicago Illinois 60616.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great. Mr. Sternyak, if you are present as well, can you please state your name and address for the record? Mr. Sternyak, it looks like you're on mute.
Oh, here I am, I'm sorry. For the record, Peter Sternyak. My office address is 5201 North Harlem Avenue, Suite 201, Chicago, Illinois 60656.
Thank you, Mr. Sternyak, and do you affirm or swear and tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Thank you, Chairman. Jorge, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Jorge Sanchez. I reside at 1700 South Desplanes, Chicago Illinois 60616.
And you're the individual beneficiary of the Standard Bank Trust, again, trust number 22060?
Yes.
And that trust holds title to the subject property at 2647 West 23rd Place, is that right?
Yes.
As I described it, it's a 24-foot-wide by 124.1-foot-deep vacant lot?
Yes.
And your plan is to develop the property with a new two-story, three-unit residential building, is that right?
Yes.
And again, your understanding is that variations are required to address the lot area total as well as that five-foot encroachment at the rear of the property, is that right?
Yes.
And again, provided the board grants the relief, your plan is to maintain ownership of the property and rent the three units on the open market?
Yes.
And you've provided the board with a summary of your economics for both the purchase and development of the property, as well as your anticipated rents, is that right?
Yes.
And it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided, is that right?
Yes, it would be.
Peter, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Peter Sternyak, 5201 North Harlem Avenue, Suite 201, Chicago Illinois 60656.
And you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Correct.
And you've testified in that capacity before this zoning board, is that right?
Yes, I did.
And again, you designed the proposed three-unit residential building for the subject property?
That's correct.
And it's your professional opinion that the substandard lot depth dimension, again, albeit a foot in width and less than a full foot in length, as well as that five-inch encroachment at the rear of the property, are the practical hardships the variations are intended to overcome, is that right?
Yes.
And again, the technical reduction in minimum lot area total is a fraction of 1%?
Correct.
And with respect to parking, even though we're asking for a technical reduction, you'll still be able to provide surface parking for three cars, is that right?
That's correct.
And other than these two issues, the minimum lot area total and the parking, onsite parking allowance, the rest of the building and the development otherwise complies with the underlying R4 zoning, is that right?
That's right.
And you believe the resulting building will be consistent and compatible with the other multi-unit buildings in the immediate area, is that right?
That's correct.
Peter, is it your understanding my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members may have.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Any questions from the board?
I'll ask a question for the applicant. As far as the hardship, can you explain why this isn't a case of too much house on too small a lot?
Well, I think for two reasons. One, as the architect just testified, to the proposed development, the floor area total, the height, the footprint of the building is all code compliant. The real question is, does the 24-square-feet, or I'm sorry, 21.6-square-foot lot total that we're short force this to be a two-unit building when it's well within the allowance for potential for a three-unit building? With respect to the offsite parking, again, it's related because we need to provide one-to-one parking in a typical scenario for our units. What prevents us from providing that third parking space at the rear of the lot is an encroachment by a neighboring building that we had no part in establishing. So it's really, it's twofold. It's a slightly substandard lot dimension that has a significant impact on our program, and again, the lot area total, I'm sorry, the number of units allowed on the lot, together with an encroachment that predates our ownership of the property.
Hi, this is Jolene Saul. What is the rate of return if we don't approve the variations?
It becomes a little tricky in that scenario because what we're projecting is apartment rents somewhere between 1,600 and 1,800 for the three units. The lower unit would probably yield the lower rent, the upper unit would yield the higher rent. If we're forced to do a two-unit building in the same physical structure, we would have to increase those rents, and there's a very significant concern about the viability of, you know, a 30% or 35% increase in rent for either of those two units. Frankly, we think it may go beyond the market and put us in a position where we're not able to actually gain an income that justifies the project, where we'd be operating potentially a loss.
But you wouldn't have to do the same structure.
The same physical structure is exactly what would be allowed in a typical scenario.
But you wouldn't have to. So can you... So you don't have that info?
No, we provided the board with our anticipated return and the cost of construction. Again, I want to be clear, on the proposed building, the physical structure is otherwise allowed, the footprint, the floor area total, the layout, we're not asking for any relief on that.
I understand. I think, at least, I'm pretty consistent in wanting to see the rate of return with and without the variation, and it's often not provided, so.
And I think to follow up on that point, though, I want to be clear. The project becomes, to a point of nearly unfinanceable if we cannot show our lender rents that are consistent with the rents around us. And if we're 35% higher than our neighboring rents, the expectation of being able to lease those units is a concern, and it may not allow us to move forward with the project.
Yeah, but that's not the real alternative. But, okay, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but that's not the only alternative there. So I'll say it again, if you could provide that info ahead of time, it would be great. Very useful for me, at least, to review these cases.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, it sounds like there's none. We will take this matter under consideration.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to move to matter number 416-20-S. And I am going to read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation on this one. While everyone else gets situated. Related to matter number 416-20-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed four-story, 12-dwelling dwelling unit building, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated July 24, 2020, prepared by Hirsch MPG Architecture and Planning.
Proceed.
Yeah, go right ahead, Nick.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks. We're here on behalf of the applicant and property owner, 3604 North Campbell Avenue, LLC. The applicant owns the subject property located at 3604 North Campbell Avenue, which, for the record, has a corresponding property address of 2502 through 2510 West Addison. The subject zoning lot measures 113 feet wide by 116 feet deep, and it's currently vacant undeveloped land. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with a new four-story, 12-unit residential building. The proposed building design provides for garage parking and an amenity room, and in this case, it's a private fitness center on the building's first floor. In order to permit those features, the applicant is required to obtain a special use because the subject property is located in a B3-2 zoning district. I have three witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Michael Slaven, on behalf of our project architect, Mr. Chris Yanis, and our MAI-designated appraiser, Mr. Terrence O'Brien. And for the record, Chairman, Chris is filling in for Mr. Hirsch. He unfortunately had a passing in his family, but Chris is familiar with the program and actually works under Howard's direction.
Okay, great. We can get them sworn in first. Mr. Slaven, so if you're present...
Yes, I'm here.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Michael Slaven, address is 225 West Hubbard Street, Suite 400 in Chicago, Illinois 60654.
Great, and do you affirm or swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Chris, sorry, I'm blanking on your last name and it's Howard's name on this, my notes. So can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, I'm Chris Yanis for Hirsch MPG. I'm located at 225 West Hubbard, Chicago, Illinois 60654.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Mr. O'Brien, if you could please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Terrence O'Brien, 7383 North Lincoln Avenue, Lincolnwood, Illinois, professional real estate appraiser and consultant.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Great, and we acknowledge your expertise based on hearing many times before us. Okay, Nick, you can...
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael? Thank you, Michael, can you please restate your name and address for the record?
Yes, name is Michael Slaven, address is 225 West Hubbard Street, Suite 400 in Chicago, Illinois, 60654.
Again, you're the managing member of the applicant, 3604 North Campbell Avenue LLC, is that right?
Yes.
That entity owns the subject property at 3604 North Campbell?
Yes.
And as I described it, you're proposing to develop the property with a new four-story 12-unit residential building, is that right?
That's correct.
And given the current uncertainty in the retail market, as well as the surrounding residential neighborhood and even the subject properties proximity to Lane Tech High School, your plan foregoes a typical grade level retail space, is that right?
That's correct.
And instead, your plan is going to incorporate additional onsite parking for the future occupants of the building, as well as an amenity room on the first floor, is that right?
Yes, it is.
And again, that design requires special use approval from this board, right?
Yes.
And given your familiarity and your experience in the subject neighborhood, you believe the proposal will be consistent and compatible with the surrounding land uses, is that right?
Yes.
And more specifically, you and your company were involved in the development of the all residential buildings located immediately west of the subject site on, fronting on Addison, is that right?
That's correct.
Michael, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, again, I do have Chris available to possibly answer questions about the design of the building. This is a special use case, would you mind if I went directly to Mr. O'Brien for testimony on the standards for special use?
Yep, that's quite all right, thank you.
Thank you, Terry, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Terrence O'Brien, O-B-R-I-E-N, maintain offices at 7383 North Lincoln Avenue in Lincolnwood, Illinois, professional real estate appraiser, consultant licensed by the state, and have the designation MAI.
And again, Terry, you were retained in this case to determine whether the proposed special use would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, is that right?
That is correct.
And you physically inspected the subject property?
Yes, I inspected the subject property in August 7 of this year, and I've also done a substantial amount of appraisal and consulting work in the surrounding area, so I'm quite familiar with the subject and surrounding area.
You also prepared a written zoning analysis report summarizing your findings and conclusions, is that right?
That is correct.
And briefly, Terry, it's your general opinion, I'm sorry, it's your general professional opinion that proposed all residential building or one that doesn't have that retail component on the first floor would be consistent and compatible at the subject property, is that right?
That's correct, and the basis for that is the fact that located immediately to the west of the subject are six relatively new, modern, multi-story structures utilizing the ground floor for residential purposes, then the area to the east of Campbell Avenue, there are several residential structures there that utilize the ground floor for residential purposes. The area to the north is a paved alley and located north of that, again, are residential structures, so the three areas abutting or in close proximity to the subject are all residential in nature in which the ground floor is utilized for residential purposes, and as previously mentioned, the area south of Addison is where Lane Tech High School is located.
So again, Terry, you did prepare a written report, and it's your understanding my office filed a copy of that report with the board, is that true?
That is correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements and conclusions in your report?
Yes, it would be.
Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief, again, we do have an architect present to answer questions about the program, if there are any.
Okay, thank you, Councilor, any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. So with all the properties nearby that do have, that are using residential on the on the first level, what kind of commercial activity is in the area? Can you describe some of that?
So, and I'd ask Mr. O'Brien to follow up, but if you go immediate, if you go back to the aerial view of the property, west of us, when you get past the six all residential buildings is, I believe, it's essentially a strip mall, so there is commercial activity there, and then just west of that is a McDonald's with the drive-through. As you go east toward Western Avenue, there's more retail, but again, that's closer to the intersection at Western and Addison. The predominant stretch between the subject block east to Western Avenue along Addison is almost entirely residential. Again, until you get further closer to the corner intersection.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Sounds like none, we'll take this under consideration, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, moving right along, let's go to matter at 133 West 87th Street. I'll read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation for this one as well. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a one-lane drive-through facility to serve a proposed Dunkin' Donuts restaurant, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Reina 87th Ryan LLC, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site details, floor plan, elevations, and landscape details dated as of August 7, 2020, and the site demo plan, site plan, and landscape plan dated as of December 15, 2020, prepared by Nick Scarletis and Associates Limited.
Chairman, again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Reina 87th Ryan LLC. The applicant has a contract to purchase the subject property located again at 133 West 87th Street. The subject site contains approximately 30,000 square feet of total lot area, and it's currently improved with surface parking. It's really an outlot for a larger shopping mall. The applicant is proposing to develop the outlot with a new one-story Dunkin' Donuts restaurant. The plans call the call for the installation of code-compliant landscaping, perimeter fencing, onsite parking, and a single lane drive-through. In order to permit the drive-through lane, the applicant is seeking a special use because the subject property is located in a B3 zoning district. I have three witnesses available to testify. Again, Mr. Sanj Kattal on behalf of the applicant, our project architect, Nicoletta Scarletis, and our land planning consultant, Mr. Kareem Musawir.
Great, Mr. Kattal, if you can, if you're present, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sanjeev Kattal, 516 Gene Darfler Court, Naperville, Illinois, 60565.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Mr. Scarletis, can you please state your name and address for the record?
This is Nicoletta Scarletis.
Apologies, Ms. Scarletis, I'm sorry about that.
No worries, I'm the project architect of this project. Address is 5405 West 127th Street, Crestwood, Illinois, 60418.
And you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, great, Mr. Musawir, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Kareem Musawir, 221 North LaSalle Street, Chicago. I'm a land planning consultant.
Great, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, and we acknowledge your expertise. Nick, you can go right ahead.
Thank you. Sanj, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sanjeev Kattal, 516 Gene Darfler Court, Naperville, Illinois, 60565.
And you're the manager of the applicant, Reina 87th Ryan LLC, is that right?
Yes.
And again, you have a contract to purchase the subject property at 133 West 87th Street?
Yes.
And your plan is to develop the outlot with a new Dunkin' Donuts restaurant, is that true?
Yes.
As I described it, your plan incorporates a single lane drive-through?
Yes.
And that drive-through is what brings us before the zoning board today, is that true?
Correct.
You have over 20 years of experience in the fast food or quick service restaurant industry?
Yes.
As of today, you have 16 operating drive-through lanes in the city of Chicago and the surrounding suburbs, is that right?
Correct.
So it goes without saying that the drive-through component is a critical component of your business, is that right?
Yes.
And it's something you need to stay competitive in the marketplace?
Absolutely.
It's also a commitment made as a franchisee of the larger Dunkin' Donuts Corporation, is that right?
Correct.
Sanj, it's your understanding that my office has filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Correct, yes.
Thank you very much. Chairman, I'd like to call Ms. Scarletis just briefly, because we did make a few adjustments to the plan based on DPD's recommendation, I just want to make sure those changes are incorporated into the record, is that okay?
Yep, that's okay, thank you.
Okay, Nick, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Nicoletta Scarletis, 5405 West 127th Street, Crestwood, Illinois, 60418.
You are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
And you've testified in that capacity before this board many times, is that right?
Yes, I have.
You designed the program for the proposed restaurant and drive-through lane at the subject property?
Yes.
And over the last week, you incorporated a number of changes recommended by both the Department of Planning and also the Department of Transportation, is that right?
That's correct.
And based on those changes, it's your understanding that we now have preliminary DPD and CDOT approvals for the design?
Yes.
And in addition, you believe the design will comply with the landscape ordinance as well?
Yes, we do.
And you believe the site will function in a safe and efficient manner, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Nicoletta. If I can call Mr. Musawir?
Yes.
Kareem, can you please state your name and address for the record again?
Yes, Kareem Musawir, 221 North LaSalle Street, Chicago.
And again, you were, I'm sorry, you were retained in this case to determine whether the requested special use would meet the criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, is that right?
That's correct.
You physically inspected the subject property?
I did.
You also prepared a written zoning report summarizing your findings and conclusions about this case, is that right?
That's correct.
And it's your understanding that my office filed a copy of that report with the board?
Yes, sir.
And very generally, you believe that the proposed special use, assuming the board grants the relief, will comply with the rest of the requirements of the code, is that right?
Yes, it's in a very heavily developed commercial area with a number of vehicular use facilities in the neighborhood.
And Kareem, if you were to continue to testify today, is it true that your testimony would be consistent with the statements and findings in your report?
Yes, they would.
Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief, again, we'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members might have about the program.
Okay, thanks, Nick, I've got one quick question to start with. From the, the application materials, there's an image that shows a Dunkin' Donuts immediately across the street. Is that being moved, or is there going to be two Dunkin' Donuts across the street from each other?
It's being moved, that location's being moved.
Okay, is it one of your?
That one is shutting down, yeah, that one, we're shutting it down to move across the street.
Oh, so that's one of your locations?
Yeah, yeah, that's one of mine, yes, yes.
Okay, okay, got it, thank you, any other questions from the board?
Hi, and this is Jolene, I guess I would just ask, I'm assuming this is a better location, but can you just say why you're shutting that one down and opening this one?
Because the other one is in line with no drive-through, and it's, this one is on the breakfast side of the street with a drive-through.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take this under consideration, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, and we're going to be switching the next two, so we're going to jump to matter 419-20-Z at 1214 West Grand.
Chairman, again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and property owner, American Tower Corporation. American Tower owns and again operates the subject property at 1214 West Grand Avenue. The subject property measures 24 feet wide by only 106 feet deep, and it's improved with an existing wireless communication tower and existing equipment shelters that support the use of the tower. The applicant is proposing to relocate one of the equipment shelters onsite. The issue is at the location of the existing tower and the existing infrastructure limit where the new or the relocated cabinets can go. So, and those conditions are further complicated by the subject property's substandard lot depth dimension. In order to permit the relocated equipment shelter, as well as the 10-foot tall security fence, the applicant is seeking a variation to reduce the rear setback from the required 30 feet to 3.75 feet. We did submit the witness affidavits on behalf of both the applicant and the architect. However, in communication with staff, we have a third witness available to testify, we just want to make sure we're bringing everybody involved at the property before the board. So on behalf of American Tower Corporation, we have Ms. Nicole Hall, on behalf of Verizon, we have Mr. Arol, and I'm sorry, Outerasing, and our project architect, Mr. Dennis Murphy. The reason we restructured it this way is American Tower owns and manages the, the physical cabinets and the tower, however, the equipment in those cabinets is going to be maintained by Verizon. I just wanted to make sure, again, the board had all the interested parties available for questions if there are any.
Okay, great, yeah, Nick, can you actually, with these ones, because she got cut off, can you get their name and address, and I'll swear them in?
Nicole, can you start with your name and address?
Chairman, I don't see any Nicole, there were two unidentified numbers that allowed them to talk, so. I don't know.
I believe that, I believe the 219 may be the number for Nicole, hold on one second.
I don't see any 219.
It's the 2195048, it's currently on mute.
Yeah, yeah, there we go. Nicole has to press star six on her phone to unmute. Star six. There we go.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, so this is Nicole Hall, and my residence address is 316 Inverness Drive, Cary, Illinois, 60013.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Are you still on as well?
And really quick, while we're finding the next witness, Ms. Hall, will you please state your, your role in, in the company?
Yes, I'm a project manager for the Illinois, Wisconsin, and parts of Iowa and Indiana sites for the American Tower portfolio.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Maybe we can pass on to Mr. Murphy, Dennis Murphy, I believe he's on as well.
I'm on, Nick. This is Aaron.
Can you state your name? Can you state your name and address for the record?
This is Errol Al Tarsing. My address is fifteen fifteen East Woodfield Road, tenth floor, Schaumburg, Illinois, six oh one seven three.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Al Tarsing. Will you please, or do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, lastly is Dennis, I'm sorry, Chairman. Lastly is Mr. Dennis Murphy?
Hello, this is Dennis Murphy. I reside at six six two five North Olmsted, Chicago.
Great, and thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Chairman, can I call my first witness?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, so Nicole, as you stated, you're one of the managers with the applicant, American Tower Corporation. Is that right?
Yep.
And American Tower is a nationwide company with cellular tower locations in almost every state?
Correct.
And as a as a regional manager, you're based in Illinois, but you oversee installation and upgrade projects in Illinois, Iowa, Wisconsin, and Indiana. Is that right?
Correct.
And of course, that includes the subject property at twelve fourteen West Grand Avenue.
That's correct.
And it's your understanding that one of the providers that uses the property is proposing to relocate an equipment shelter to the rear of that site. Is that right?
Correct.
And variation, variations required because both of the existing footprints of the the existing infrastructure as well as the substandard lot depth dimension. Is that right?
Correct.
And that actually concludes my testimony from Nicole. If I can turn the floor over to Errol?
Yes, sir.
Again, you're a project manager with Verizon Wireless?
That is correct.
Your equipment is going to be going into the shelter that's being proposed at the rear of the subject property?
Yes.
And the reason we're doing this is to upgrade service at the the tower to the five G network. Is that right?
That is correct.
And the reason the cabinet is going where it's proposed is because there's other existing infrastructure as well as obviously the cellular tower already on the property. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. And Dennis, if you are still on, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, Dennis?
Yes, I am.
This is actually your first time testifying before the zoning board, but you have testified in front of other zoning and zoning boards in the in the state of Illinois. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And Chairman, we did provide Mr. Murphy's Illinois licensure to help qualify him as an expert in this case.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. We we reviewed that and we we acknowledge him in this case as expert.
Thank you very much.
Just note, I think it's a variation, so it's not even, I don't think it's required to have an expert. But keep going.
I just want to make sure it's in the record. Thank you, sir. Dennis, you you're firm design the proposed shelter at the rear of the subject property?
Yes.
And it's your professional opinion that the substandard lot dimension, together with the existing improvements on the lot, create the practical difficulties or particular hardships in this case. Is that right?
That's correct.
Because again, then just looking at the site plan and survey, you're limited as to where this type of infrastructure can be located, right?
That's correct.
And because of the existing fencing built at the front of the property, and then again, the proposed fencing at the rear, you're, you believe the site will be secure on on both both frontages?
Correct.
And it won't actually, the cabinet itself will not be plainly visible to the public, right?
That's correct.
Dennis, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would.
Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. Again, all all three of us or four of us are here to answer questions about the program if there are any.
Thank you, everyone. Any questions from the board? Sounds like none, so we're gonna take this under consideration.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
We're gonna move to matter four eighteen dash twenty dash S. I understand that we have some objectors present in this case. So everyone bear with me. I'm gonna quickly read the instructions for objections. And then I'm gonna read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. I want to remind everyone that this is not a town hall. This is a hearing, so we as the board are looking for evidence that either supports or does not support the applicant's case. Here's how we're gonna proceed. First, the applicant will put on their case and all their witnesses, then we'll turn to the objectors, and the objectors can put on their case as well as ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. After that, the applicant can ask questions of the objectors, then we'll return to the applicant for rebuttal testimony and closing remarks. After that, finally, the board will take the matter under advisement. Throughout the hearing, the board members will be asking questions of both applicant and the objectors. I understand that Alderman LaFata is present, so we will defer to the alderman, whether he'd prefer to make a statement upfront or when we get to the rest of the objectors. While we're making sure everyone has audio, I'm gonna read the recommendation by the Department of Planning and Development. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a pawn shop, provided that special use is issued solely to the applicant, MKAWBP LLC, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the floor plan dated as of September twenty-third, twenty twenty, prepared by Funk Architects.
Chairman, again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, MKAWBP LLC, which does business at Chicago Super Pawn. The applicant currently operates a pawn store at thirty-four oh one West Fullerton Avenue. Unfortunately, the store was damaged and looted during the civil unrest earlier this summer, and the applicant is now proposing to relocate this to the subject property at thirty-one twenty-nine West Armitage Avenue. The subject property is located in a B three one zoning district, and a special use is required in order to permit the pawn store use. I do have two witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Wally Posner, and our MAI-designated appraiser, Mr. Terrence O'Brien. Chairman, before I call my first witness, I actually would like to amend the applicant's witness statement. The applicant has approximately five and a half years of experience in the pawn industry, all of which which were spent at the current location, again, thirty-four oh one West Fullerton Avenue. The witness statement incorrectly refers to fifteen years of professional experience, and I want to make sure that's clear for the record. All of the other statements and assertions made in our witness statements and in Mr. O'Brien's report are true to the are true and correct to the best knowledge of the applicant and, of course, Mr. O'Brien. I just want to make that correction before we offer any additional testimony here today. And of course, I'd be happy to provide the board with a written revision if the oral amendment is insufficient. I'll follow your lead on that point.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Yeah, we'll circle back on that. Thank you.
Otherwise, I would ask to call Mr. Posner as our first witness. Wally, are you there?
I'm here.
Wally, can you please state your name and address for the record so the chairman can swear you in?
Wally Posner, one one eight Wellington Road, Northbrook, Illinois, six zero zero six two.
Thank you, Mr. Posner. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
And Chairman, our second witness is Mr. O'Brien, who you've previously sworn, but if you want to re-swear him in, we can do that now too if you'd like.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien's on the record, so go right ahead.
Thanks. Wally, is it true that you're the manager of the applicant, MKAWBP LLC, which again, does business at Chicago Super Pawn?
Yes.
And Wally, Chicago Super Pawn is a family-owned and operated business that's been in your control for the last five and a half years. Is that right?
That is correct.
And you've personally been involved in the store that whole time?
Yes, I am.
And as I explained in my introduction, you're proposing to relocate to the store from thirty-four oh one West Fullerton Avenue to the subject property at thirty-one twenty-nine West Armitage Avenue. Is that right?
That is correct.
And it's true that you chose this new location because of its proximity to your current operation. Is that right?
That is correct.
You're staying within about three quarters of a mile, which will hopefully allow you to maintain the customer base and the customer relationships you've developed in the immediate area. Is that right?
Yes.
And the new location at Kedzie and Armitage isn't an active retail area, obviously outside of COVID. Is that is that right? Mr. Mr. Posner, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you believe that the the new location could could also be beneficial to the to the business. Is that right?
Yes, I do.
And the subject property again is located in a B three zoning district?
Yes, it is.
And pawn shops require a special use in the B three district, and you're before the board today seeking that approval. Is that right?
Correct.
And being that you're relocating, your plan is to continue the business of retail sale and pawning of general merchandise and personal property. Is that right?
That is correct.
Watches and jewelry have really become the base of your business because of your experience and familiarity with those items. Is that true?
That is true.
In fact, upwards of about seventy percent of your current revenue comes from jewelry-related services, including everything from ponds and trade-ins to even repairs. Is that right?
Correct.
And still, you also, of course, expect to deal with other types of electronic equipment, tools, collectibles, and even sports memorabilia. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
And based on your experience at your current location, you feel comfortable maintaining that that broad scope of items at the new location, right?
Correct.
And so the board is clear that your store is not just a pawn shop, right?
No, it is not.
Instead, the business really functions more like a any other retail store. Is that fair?
That is correct.
So customers can come in and either purchase or sell an item without necessarily engaging in a pawn transaction?
That is correct.
In fact, items you purchase outright from a customer end up on on display for potential resale?
Yes, they do.
And those items would could be or can be viewed by any other customer or collector that comes to your store?
That is correct.
Specifically with pawn items, you offer a customer a short-term loan and use the physical item as collateral, right?
Correct.
The these customers are, for the most part, as as you've learned, typically unbankable or unable to obtain credit from a traditional financial institution. Is that right?
Unfortunately, yes.
So they don't have a piece of real estate or a business interest to loan or mortgage against for a short-term line of credit?
No, they do not.
And you become their their real option for, again, providing that short-term financing?
Correct.
And based on general current data provided by the FDIC, it's it's interesting that about a quarter of households in the United States are either unbankable or do not maintain bank accounts. Is that right?
That is my understanding, yes.
So that's that's the the customer typically served by this type of institution?
Correct.
Now, based on your loan agreements, a pawn customer would make a monthly interest payment to keep that loan current, right?
Yes.
And at the end of the loan term, the customer would either pay the balance of the loan, would need to pay the balance of the of the loan to get his or her property back, right?
Correct, or pay the interest and extend the loan.
Okay, and if they decide not to do that and simply default on the loan, stop making payments after a thirty-day term, you then take ownership of the property. Is that right?
After sixty days, we take, after sixty days, we take ownership of the property. But we do our best to inform our clients that their payments are due, and that is not our goal to take their property.
Okay, and again, in the event you do, the property is forfeited after that sixty day, I'm sorry, after the the sixty-day term, that's when you put the property on display and attempt to sell it to recoup the loan that you made. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Wally, in your experience, how long or is a typical pawn loan?
Generally, approximately thirty days.
Okay, and you do, and again, you you could extend that to sixty or ninety based on the initial agreement, right?
Correct.
And is there an industry standard for monthly interest that you charge on a typical pawn transaction?
There is an industry standard that allows for twenty percent. That is not necessarily how we function.
So you you are free to negotiate a loan term or a an interest rate under that twenty percent max, according to the state statute. Is that right?
Correct.
So again, based on a particular customer, your relationship or ongoing relationship with that customer, you're able to make a judgment call based on that, again, that specific transaction?
That is correct.
And of course, no matter what, you'll continue to comply with the state regulations for the industry. Is that right?
Yes.
And based on current trends, and again, your experience for the last five and a half years, about how many transactions turn out to be pawn transactions versus retail sales or retail purchase transactions?
I believe we're somewhere around seventy percent retail, thirty percent pawn.
And of the pawn items, specific to the pawn items, is there a general, have you seen a redemption rate? Do you count on a redemption redemption rate?
Yes.
What is that rate?
Approximately twenty, seventy-eight percent redemption rate.
And specific to the pawn component, are there any pawn specific items that you will not pawn?
Yes, there are. We will not take in firearms or any items that can be construed as a weapon. We do not take in any drug paraphernalia, and we do not take in bicycles. And we.
Specifically, I'm sorry, specifically with bicycles, the the thought process there, the reason there is because it's very hard to verify ownership of such an item, right?
That is correct.
And again, in addition to the items that are pawned or purchased from customers, it's true that you also offer separate retail products for sale, right?
That is correct.
For example, you might purchase five new computers from Best Buy or a drill set from Home Depot and then put that on display for sale at your store, right?
Yes.
And as we've discussed, you've also offered watch and jewelry repair and even customization services for jewelry. Is that right?
That is correct.
And as we spoke to earlier, over the last five years, you've developed a bit of a comfort level and a specialty with various types of jewelry, right?
That is correct.
And the the point here is that in addition to the pawn component, which is only about a third of your business, you'll continue to operate with a significant retail component of the business. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
With respect to the proposed store, the new location, the space is about twenty-five hundred square feet in total area?
That is correct.
And you're proposing to divide that space into a customer display area, employee space, storage, and then a private office, right?
Correct.
You're also planning to bring your two current full-time employees from the Fullerton store to the Armitage store. Is that right?
That is correct.
And again, if the opportunity presents itself, you you're looking to potentially even hire additional employees to help run the run the operation. Is that right?
Correct.
The proposed hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from ten AM to six PM, and on Saturdays from ten AM to five PM. Is that right?
That is correct.
You'll also be closed on Sundays? You'll also be closed on Sundays?
That is correct.
And those are the same hours you've maintained at your Fullerton location, right?
Yes, they are.
With respect to security, you plan to install security cameras both inside the store and on the exterior of the building?
Correct.
You'll also be installing an alarm system, again, to, to, to prevent any type of theft or more importantly, to protect the people that are coming to and from the store. Is that right?
Correct.
Is it also true that you'll be required to continue to work with the local police department on a daily basis, reporting any of the items that you pawn or purchase outright from a customer?
That is correct.
And as part of that regular business practice, you'll maintain paperwork for each and every transaction and document every item that you take in at the store. Is that right?
That is correct.
You'll also keep a photo ID of any person transacting business upon transaction inside the store. Is that right?
That is correct.
And on top of that, you'll report to both the local Illinois, I'm sorry, the local police department as well as the national leads database each time upon or outright purchase occurs?
We do that on a daily basis.
And this daily reporting system is something you're already well versed in experience and based on your current operation, right?
Yes.
So you're confident you'll be able to operate the proposed location in a safe and efficient manner, right?
Yes, I am.
Thank, thank you, Wally. Chairman, my next witness is Mr. O'Brien. Do you want to offer question or ask questions of Mr. Poser now, or should we wait until the applicant's case is concluded?
You know, let's, let's, uh, let's work through Mr. O'Brien's points and then open them up once that's concluded.
Okay, thank you. Terry, can you please state your name and address again for the record?
Yes, Terrence O'Brien, O P R I E N. Maintain offices at seventy three eighty three North Lincoln Avenue, Lincolnwood, Illinois. Professional real estate appraiser consultant licensed by the state of Illinois and have the professional designation MAI.
And Terry, you're familiar with the subject property at thirty one twenty nine West Armitage Avenue?
That is correct. I inspected the property for this specific assignment in September twenty sixth of this year, and I've also done other work in the surrounding area. So I am familiar with the subject and surrounding area.
Can you please briefly describe the character, the makeup of the immediate area?
Yes, the immediate area, which the subject located, subject's located on the south east corner of Kedzie and Armitage Avenue. If one was to review the zoning maps for the city of Chicago, it would be easy to realize the fact that the majority of the properties located east and west of the subject for at least a block, at least a block are all these properties at front on Armitage Avenue are business and commercial in nature. The subject property is also his own business. That's B three dash one, which is a community shopping district. Some of the uses existing in the subject area include immediately to the east of the subject is a laundromat. East of that is a doctor's office. Across the street from the subject is an older two story structure. First floor utilized for retail purposes and it appears second floor is utilized for residential purposes. Immediately to the east of that, on the north side of Armitage Avenue is a large commercial structure, which I believe was formerly occupied by Walgreens and is currently occupied by, I just want to review my notes here, Catholic Charities Facility. Located to the west of the subject is Kedzie Avenue, which is a primary thoroughfare, as is Armitage Avenue. West of that is an older three story brick commercial structure on the ground floors utilized for commercial purposes. While the upper floors appear to be used for apartment or residential purposes. Then along the west side, west of Kedzie, on the north and south side of Armitage Avenue, the primary land uses again for at least a block are business and commercial in nature, includes such things as taverns or restaurants and so forth. To the south of the subject is a paved alley. South of that is a residential structure, an older two story, one and part two story, I should say. It appeared that at one time that structure has a one story section that may have been utilized for retail or commercial purposes, but is currently doesn't appear to be occupied or anything like that. The subject itself with, is a multi tenant structure, contains approximately eight thousand six hundred and some square feet. The area to be occupied by the applicant, the special uses granted contains approximately two thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. Located to the east of the subject structure is an adjoining paid parking lot that can accommodate approximately twenty four automobiles and is used exclusively for the tenants of the subject property. And some of these uses within the subject include a Subway sandwich shop as well as a deli, I believe it is Logan eats. And then there is a smoke shop. Z's Smoke Shop. That pretty well describes the subject and surrounding area.
And as, as you know, we're here today proposing, excuse me, to proposing to locate and establish a, a pawn shop at the subject property. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Based on your inspection of the subject area, did you determine whether the proposed use would be compatible with the subject area?
Yes, I believe it will be compatible. And I would begin by emphasizing what you just went through with the applicant. That is that the area is primarily business and commercial in nature, including retail sales and services. The subject primary use will be also retail in nature with some financial transactions. I would point out that under the existing zoning classification, general retail sales are allowed and also financial institutions are allowed. So this particular use or application is really a hybrid of the two uses I've just described.
And, and Terry, one of the concerns that's come up through the, the review process is property values. Is, is there anything? Do you have any reason to believe in your professional opinion that a proposed pawn shop would cause a significant diminution in property value to surrounding properties?
I would begin by saying no. In my opinion, it'll have no adverse or diminution in value. In all the years of my experience as a real estate appraiser, I have found that what impacts value is the introduction of a use into an area which is not harmonious and compatible with other uses. As I stated just a minute ago, the use for the proposed is retail and financial in nature, whereas that's allowed uses under the existing zoning classification. And it is similar to many of the other existing uses. The proposed use will not generate any excessive traffic. There's adequate parking on site. It's not going to generate any excessive noise, a generation of any obnoxious odors or fumes. It will not result in some unsightly view, will not result in any loss of air and light to surrounding property values. And I'd also point out the fact that the current area which the subject would be located is vacant. And with the result of the pandemic, there is a substantial amount of vacancy throughout the city of Chicago and actually throughout the country in terms of business and retail uses. This particular site is really a secondary site and it wouldn't generate a substant, the area doesn't generate a substantial amount of traffic. And as a result, I think in, if the property wasn't leased to the applicant, it would have a difficult time finding the tenant which could occupy, occupy it and provide a reasonable return in the event they were to lease the property.
Terry, based on the foregoing, in your professional opinion, will the proposed special use comply with the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, and more specifically, I did address these standards within my report and concluded that the proposed use is harmonious and compatible with other land uses. It'll have no adverse impact. It puts to productive use property which is currently vacant. It will provide for employment opportunities and it'll also provide for sales tax revenue to the city of Chicago and other taxing bodies.
And Terry, you, again, you prepared a written report summarizing all of these findings and conclusions?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And if you're understanding, my office submitted a copy of that report to the zoning board ahead of today's hearing. Is that right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we, or you provided in that report?
Yes.
Chairman, that, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions about the proposal at this time.
Yeah, I think before, before we get to any objectors or that, I'd like to just hear from Mr. Poser about any conversations that he's had with the community or the community alderman chamber, organizations like that.
In, I have, uh, I have a nice relationship with the fourteenth district. As far as talking to individuals in that area, we posted signs and we stayed in touch with Alderman Laspada and as recently as November second, received no objections as to what our goals were. Currently, we are at thirty four zero one. We, we try to be different in the respect that, you know, if it's raining out, we want people to come in and stay dry. We try to be part of the community. And that to me is what distinguishes a good business from a bad business is to understand what your community needs are and trying to become part of that community.
Okay, great. And so, you know, any other questions from the board before we get into the objectors? Whether substantive or holistic?
I'll, I'll ask you a, a question. As far as the, the retail side of your business, what what, what types of things do you sell?
We sell everything, collectibles, coins. I'm a, I'm a collector. I've been a collector my entire life. Memorabilia, I love antiques. We sell electronics, tools, jewelry of all sorts. The, the more knowledge I have, the more apt I am into dealing in that particular item. And so I'm always trying to further my education by learning more about items that I really had no understanding of.
You, you testified earlier that one of the things that you don't take is, is bicycles because it's hard to determine ownership. When it comes to the, to the things that you do take in, what steps do you take to determine that you're actually buying an item that is owned by the person who's selling it?
Thank you for asking that question. With electronics, when we take in, for example, a computer and it's locked, we're not very receptive. You know, a red flag goes up. We also want to see that, you know, the, their family pictures in that computer. If there's no family pictures in that computer, I'm uncomfortable with doing any transaction. As far as things like instruments, if an instrument comes in such as a guitar, we ask them to play it. And or any type of instrument, a tuba, you know, flute, tuba, clarinet. And if they can't play it, again, a red flag goes up. So this year, I do not believe we had any confiscations. And that is, I would rather, I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board before we go to objectors? All right, we'll circle back. There will, I'm sure there will be more questions, but right now, I'll go to the objectors and I understand that Alderman Laspada and his colleague, Nick Zetow are on the line. So I want to give them the opportunity to lead this off.
Thank you. This is Alderman Daniel Spata. I'll start him first. So I wanted to share that I, I recognize that there are many Chicagoans who lack access to reasonable financial services, who lack the lending resources that they deserve. That is one of the reasons why my office and several others are working on financial services reform, working for the unbanked, working on public banking concerns. One of my broader concerns with pawn shops in general, of which the, the first ward already does have three is existing pawn shops is the rates that are charged. It's not really the mode by which if we're looking at reinvestment in financial services, I would prefer to see the lending needs of our residents met. But broadly speaking, like we're, this is not specifically about whether pawn shops should exist. We're talking about whether this is the right location. And in general, we try to speak in these cases, based on what we're hearing from the community. In this case, we did have nineteen letters and many more phone calls come to our office. Generally, if it's a ZBA case, it'll be a mix of positive and negative. In this case, all of the letters we received, which I believe were forwarded to the ZBA, were negative. Our residents in the area were unanimous in their opposition to this being a site for a pawn shop. Some of the, the general themes in the concerns that they brought forward were a lack of community engagement. Not disputing that the, the legally mandated notices were put forward, but that the concern from the community seemed to be that that was the the ceiling of the engagement that they received rather than the floor. People talked about a perceived correlation between an increase in property crimes and the presence of pawn shops. Many folks cited a two, two thousand eight University of Michigan study that does appear to, through their research, show a correlation distinctly between property crimes and a prevalence of pawn shops in the community. They questioned whether a new pawn shop improves the welfare of the community, whether it would have a positive impact on other local businesses. I hear what they're saying because they're not questioning whether there should be a new retail store at this location. I don't think the concern is whether resale shops have a place in Logan Square or Humboldt Park. The question is very specifically related to pawn shops. That was the concern, particularly I'll raise also the question on whether pawn shops belong in residential districts. I, I know our, one of our witnesses spoke to the commercial character of Armitage Avenue, but realistically, this really isn't on Armitage, it's on Kedzie in terms of where the storefront is facing. And most of the adjacent properties, the general character of Kedzie there is of single family homes and two and three flats. Those are the majority of the residents that we've heard from and who have, again, been universal in their opposition to their perceived sense of what this business is. I know that this doesn't, the ZBA use standards that I saw are only that a pawn shop cannot be within a thousand feet of another pawn shop. Are, are granted, this seems to meet that minimum standard, although by that justification, you could have five standard, five, five pawn shops on every mile of commercial street in Chicago. So the concerns are more broadly in terms of whether this is an appropriate use for this site based off of what Kedzie and Armitage in the surrounding area is. I may leave it to Nick Settle to add some context. I will add, there was a question of what the relationship with my office has been and to be honest, I had And to be honest, I had not heard from Mr. Posner on this until about 4:30 last night, when there was a call added to my work night. That was the first he had reached out to me directly concerning this business. Nick, do you have, Nick Zettel, do you have additional context?
Hello Chairman, if it's permitted, I'd like to speak.
Nick, for us, can you please just give your name and address?
Of course, absolutely. Good afternoon. My name is Nicholas Zettel. I'm from the First Ward Office, which is located at 1958 North Milwaukee in the city of Chicago, 60647.
Great. And Nick, do you swear a firm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, there, there is a matter, I would like to ask whether there is any communication with our office submitted in the findings of fact of the applicant?
Yeah, I don't believe there was. I'm going to look back. We can, so I can circle back on that. I'm going to have to get back in the findings of fact, but I don't remember there being any.
At the risk of submitting hearsay, I will affirm under oath that I am swearing to tell the whole truth here that our office first heard of this from residents who got the mailing. So we, under my search of all of our intakes, which includes emails from external parties, which would be someone like Mr. Posner or his counselor, we have not received an email from them introducing this application. And moreover, we do not have any internal communications. What happens in the First Ward Office is that oftentimes, someone will call the office and there will be an internal communication where whoever answers the phone will then forward it to the relevant party. The relevant party in the office in this case would be myself. I work on zoning matters and I can affirm that I do not have a record of this. Unfortunately, I did not realize this was going to be a matter of consideration for the board today. So I did not submit an exhibit to this with our email, but I would like to affirm under oath today that, that we don't have any communication introducing this application. So what happens in this case is we work with our residents. We had a community survey related to a different use that was proposed at the strip mall. And then we additionally submitted, we additionally had letters. It's my role, working with our community, we take resident feedback very seriously. So I facilitated with many of our residents. I made sure that they knew that they could submit letters themselves to the zoning board of appeals. I believe you've received a number of those. And I made sure that they knew that they could also appear today. So my role, and then once we heard from residents, was just to facilitate. And so I will say that this is, that that's the extent to which we were aware of this, were aware of this matter. And so I will say, I understand that when the aldermanic office is not the determining factor, I understand why some zoning board of appeals applicants do not reach out to us. I understand that that's their prerogative sometimes. But I would just like to affirm, since it is a subject to this case, that we do not have any introductory communication for this app, this specific application at this location.
Yeah, and Nick, that's noted. And just so you know, as you stated, not, not really, not fully required, actually not required at all, but they didn't include outreach to the alderman's office in the findings of fact. What I will say is it's going to be most helpful to us that we know the objection is noted. It's going to be most helpful to us that while we consider this, it's framed around our special use standards. We're able to kind of make logical jumps from what you and the alderman have said of how they apply to our standards. But as we weigh, you know, a lot of different matters in one day, it's very, it's easy for us when they're pretty directly explained, the standards we adhere to.
Chairman, I understand and respect that. I would ask that in this case though, if, if that aspect of the applicant's testimony can be stricken, I don't think it's necessary to ask that the witness be impeached or anything like that. But I would ask that the, the aspect of communication and community outreach is then stricken just, just based on our understanding of how communication was, was handled with our office. And with that, I do just have one land use question as well, because I would like to also speak to some of the facts that occurred in the, just one question, if it's, it would also be permitted?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you Chairman. I would like to ask specifically of the applicant or the appraiser, based on how it was stated. It was stated that general retail use is permitted by right. And certainly no one on this call is going to, is going to object that, to that fact that, that general retail is permitted at this site. So I would ask, what is, if the percentage of sales for the applicant is so high in terms of general retail, what is stopping from this simply being a general retail application at this site, which would be permissible by right?
Chairman, I could, I could step in and answer. As we testified to earlier, 70% of the business revenue is generated from the retail sale of products. 30%, approximately a third of the business revenue comes from the pawn component. So why is it proposed? Because a third of our business is based on, on that component.
Thank you Counselor. I appreciate your response on that. I would only then question to the board, Chairman, I would ask that you scrutinize the position that this is a general retail use and a financial use, which is I believe how the appraiser stated on their testimony. I would like to state that if 30% of the business is a pawn use and that that is required of a special use, that, that, then that scrutiny is placed under the five characteristics of the special use. And as submitted in our letter, I do ask that you consider our residents' feedback about two of the specific areas of the code, which are the, the major areas that the residents raised. I, I just think, as long as we're in front of the zoning board of appeals, I believe that we should not characterize uses according to buy right uses. We should characterize uses according to the reasons that they are being applied to the board. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks Nick. For a little background for us, just as we weigh these standards. So can you give us any context on what other retailers have considered going into this space? Or, or if there have been any? The reality, I know there's residences nearby, but the reality is, when we look at this space, it's, it looks kind of like a strip mall. So I imagine only a certain type of, of retail shop would go in. And just because you guys brought up the point, I'd like to hear a little bit about what you, what you would anticipate, should it not be this?
I'm sorry, is that question for, which Nick is that? That's for me?
Oh, sorry, that's confusing. Apologies. Mr. Zettel.
Okay.
Or Alderman Laspada.
I will defer to the alderman if the alderman wants to speak on this.
I mean, I would say that there's an incredible diversity of businesses all down Armitage Avenue within this space, whether, whether it's clothing, retail, commercial, like service-oriented businesses. It's one of the exciting things about Armitage Avenue is just what an incredible diversity of commercial storefronts we have. I, I don't really expect in, in this economic moment where we're still in such a shape, phase of economic restriction, that we would see another business opening within the next 30 days in this space. But there are a variety of different uses that would not be requiring a special use that I can imagine going into this space.
Okay, thank you. And one question I want to hop, while we're in the middle of this kind of bilateral communication, I want to hop to Mr. Posner. And here in particular, and apologies, you very well brought it up already, but what your hours would be?
Monday through Friday, they are 10 to 6. We are closed on holidays and Saturday from 10 to 5.
Closed on Sundays too, Nick Fatikas, I'm sorry.
Okay, other questions from the board while we have all the parties discussing? Okay, I guess my, my mind is going to as well.
You know, actually. Yeah, thank you. I actually do have one more. I actually wanted to circle back to something that Mr. Posner said about not having confiscated items in the last year. Could you give us a, could you explain that more? When you say confiscated items, would that be items confiscated by the police because they were deemed to be stolen?
Correct.
Okay. And you haven't had any confiscations in the last year?
To the best of my knowledge, we did not have any this year. And I pride our, I pride my employees and our store for accomplishing that.
Just to, just to be direct, you would know, right? Like your knowledge is pretty much absolute knowledge, because wouldn't it be clear if there was a confiscation?
Correct. I, I don't have the, my computer in front of me. I, what I am stating is I don't recall having any confiscations this year, to the best of my knowledge.
And I guess for a bit of perspective, as the industry goes, would that be exceptional? Do most pawn shops have confiscations? I'm trying to weigh how yours relates to other pawn shops.
I believe they do, and I think that's what separates us from the other pawn shops. And I have never been citated or ticketed or any nature with the police. I work with the police and I, it's, I just prefer to, we run our shop, our pawn shop differently than any other pawn shop. I pride ourselves on that.
Okay, okay, thank you. And hopping around a bit, apologies, but this question would be more for Alderman Laspada or Mr. Zetel. I know there's, I think you said three pawn shops within the ward. Not within 1,000 feet, but any approximate distance between this address and those shops?
The other two locations are just off of Fullerton and Milwaukee, North and Damon, and then roughly Oakley and Milwaukee. Chairman, apologies, I need to go into another meeting, but I very much appreciate you giving me the opportunity to testify on behalf of our residents.
Yeah, thank you Alderman Laspada. As you know, we, we love when aldermen are coming or part of the conversation, it's helpful to us. So appreciate your time. Happy holidays.
Chairman, I just have, can I jump in for a second?
Yep, absolutely.
Mr. Posner, just to clear up something earlier, how, how much experience do you have in the, in the pawn shop business?
Five, five and a half years, five years and seven months.
Is that how long you were running the prior shop?
No, prior to that, I was at the Chicago Mercantile Exchange.
I guess the question is, how long did you run the, the prior pawn shop?
30, 3401 West Fullerton, how long has, have you operated 3401 West Fullerton?
Thanks Nick.
Since May of 2015.
So to answer your question Commissioner, his experience for the last five and a half years, his, his job has been managing and overseeing operations at 3401 West Fullerton. Prior to that, so five and a half years back, he was, he was employed at the Merc.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's all.
Any other questions from the board? You know, then, sounds like none for this segment. I want to give Nick Zetel the option to, the final option to say something or ask any questions. And I believe he's the only objector present at this point. Nick, is he there?
Yes, Chairman, I do appreciate the opportunity for additional feedback. I really think that, what I just want to reiterate is what Alderman Laspada said about we're, you know, he's, he's here to represent our residents. And so I would just ask special scrutiny of the exhibits that our residents have submitted along with our letter to the areas of the special use code that I believe is most pertinent from our residents. And I would, I just ask your favorable consideration of, of that position. And I do appreciate your, your leadership and facilitation of this conversation. Thank you for, for having us here today.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Counselor Fatikas.
I only have one point of rebuttal, and then I can very briefly conclude. We, back as Mr. Posner testified to, on November 2nd, I personally drafted an email that went to the alderman's office explaining who Wally was, what the program was, what was being proposed, and why we were looking to relocate. Correspondence between our offices, there was nothing else between that November 2nd email. And up until this week, we did have, not we, my client, Mr. Posner, had a conversation with the alderman as recent as yesterday. They had a chance to talk and the decision was made that we would move forward, unfortunately, with the alderman representing some neighbors that were in objection. My office, again, followed the rules for, for notice. We did reach out, when, we did respond to Mr. Zettel when he had asked for more information about the file. And I just want to make sure that the board knows there was at least some back and forth with the alderman's office. Separate and apart from that, our case depends on the standards for special use. And I believe that those standards are being met. I believe Mr. O'Brien's analysis of the subject area, the other uses established in the area, and the compatibility of a residential financial service institution meets those standards for special use. Based on the standards for approval, we asked that the board grant the special use to allow Mr. Posner to relocate his store to the subject property. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Final opportunity for the board with any questions? Sounds like none. We will take this matter under consideration.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Posner, happy holidays.
Thank you. You also.
So I move that we go to recess for a little bit of a lunch break for the board members. Quick one, because we do have a lot left to get through. So 30-minute recess reconvene at 2:35. Commissioner Toyah Second, Commissioner Salt?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Wonderful. We will reconvene at 2:35 PM for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you everyone.